Good morning. Welcome to the February 4, 2020 Public Hearing and Public Meeting of the New York City Landmark Preservation Commission. I will call roll. Sheriff Harold.
Here.
Commissioner Glenn.
Here.
Commissioner Mayor Aaron. Commissioner Jacob.
Here.
Commissioner Jack. Commissioner Decker.
Here.
Commissioner Dolman. Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Lutke. Commissioner Paul Fordstein.
Here.
Good morning Commissioners, we're going to start today's preservation department's agenda with Public Hearing Guide on Slide Number 1. LPC 1-9-3679, application for finding a floor to propose to the 25 lot 1 Water Street in Fulton Ferry Historic District. Small power plant located in the Marine Fire Boat Station in 1926. Application is to construct an attached restaurant facility. Last presented at the public hearing on Slide 9, 2019, and our action was taken at that time.
Good morning Commissioners, Brian plays on preservation staff. The subject property is 1 Water Street, located in the Fulton Ferry Historic District. Application is for the installation of a seasonal restaurant pavilion and service shed along with the use of the ho shed of the Marine Fire Boat Station. The Commissioners should note that the ho shed has been reconstructed twice, first due to deterioration in 1995 and subsequently after a fire in 2004. The application first came to public hearing on April 9, 2019. This is the original design proposal. Most Commissioners were not opposed to an installation of this kind, however, most felt that a simpler, lighter, and more transparent solution should be explored. No action was taken, so as a result, proposal was modified in response to that feedback. For additional background, the applicant has put together a timeline showing the evolution of structures at the Fulton Ferry Landing from early structures present in post-war in 1746, seen here, to the ferry and trawley terminals in the mid-19th century, to the Marine Maritime Fire Station and Ho shed in the 1920s, to underutilization of the site in the post-war period, here in 1974, and to the temporary structure that was present in 2017. And this is kind of like a recap of all those different structures. So, the initial design approach featured a white steel structure with operable hydraulic doors and windows, and was attached to the Ho shed by a wood-clad connecting structure. The following slides show how the proposal has been modified, including: A reduction in the quantity and size of the structural members, and a change in the material to rock wrap aluminum, the removal of the operable glass doors and windows, the changing of the solid roof to a retractable fabric canopy, and eliminating the connecting structure and setting the pavilion with prefabricated service container six feet two inches off the Ho shed. And lastly, modifying the proposed over-pallet to be less dark. Benches have also been introduced facing away from the pavilion. The applicant has also proposed two options for the off-season condition, which will be roughly from early November to about early April. Option A removes the shade canopy while retaining the canopy structures and leaving the banquet seating open to the public. Option B removes the shade canopy and canopy structure but protectively wraps the baguettes. They would like to do both options. The applicants are here to answer any additional questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Brian. So, remember the last time we saw this, this was for permanent year-round structure that was heavier features and had new building connected to the shed. And the Commissioners' president felt that they needed to preserve the lower building on the pier and give it a bridge to hold the reception and relationship with the bridge and the pier. And so, the big move is to go from a year-round permanent structure to a seasonal structure that can be partially dismantled with lighter weight and more transparent materials. So I guess they could either or leave the benches and the poles, or remove the poles, wrap the benches, and that may be a question of climate in terms of which option is better. So, I think that in many ways we've tried to be responsible, while I'm saying that there's been a concession here for many, many years to also achieve that.
I did have concerns. Just asked your question before. That's my fault. In either one of those two events or positions in the winter, would the footprint of the area be also minutes to the public?
I can respond to that.
Should we open the proceedings?
Good morning, I'm Eric Mindon, President of Wiltshire Park. So, in option A, the theory would be that the footprint itself would be completely open and that the baguettes that are within would be publicly accessible for anyone. Option B takes a different approach by removing the poles and then shrink-wrapping the entire area to fully protect it and that option would not be open to the public. We've presented both options for your approval as we continue to think through the feasibility really on option B, which is removing all of the poles and the timeline associated with doing such and how long it would take. But if the Commission's strong view was that the space should be open in the winter for public seating, then certainly option A, we know at this point absolutely we can do. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
With option B, does that membrane go all the way over to the seating space?
It does, yes.
Could you just explain for a moment again why you feel that's necessary in option B?
To have option B? One of the things that we had heard quite frankly when we did share this with members of the community was that they thought that the poles in the winter time was visually obtrusive and we were looking to be responsive to that, understanding that it is a logistical challenge to do option B, but we wanted to present an option that would allow that.
I'm asking you a different question. Thank you, that's fine. Which is, you were saying you would need to shrink wrap, you would like to shrink wrap the entire area because you feel that it's going to damage or something?
So, yeah. Yeah, and actually, if I may, I'd like to bring up one of the operators, either Alex or Alzpicus, that I can specifically speak to protecting.
Hello, I'm Alex Micas. Thank you for having us today. In response to the shrink wrapping, we would cover, in the shrink wrap option, we would cover the baguettes completely to preserve against snow and rain and weather over the winter season. And then option A, you'll see if you look closely, the bar itself is just shrink wrapped enough. So in the center of the space, there would be a small shrink-wrapped object as opposed to an option B, which would be the entire object.
Where do you propose an option B underneath the shrink wrap?
Underneath the shrink wrap. There's a substantial construction ramp up and ramp down in terms of removing the poles, which is part of the complication of option B.
Is there a shrink-wrapped material that is less visually intrusive than the stuff they put on boats with these shiny, white, monstrous materials, non-sustainable?
As I understand it, there's two different types of shrink-wrapped material. There's the white, and then there's a kind of electric blue color. There's not any, in terms of actual technical shrink wrap, there's not really that much. We talked about the possibility of wrapping it with a graphic print after it's shrink wrapped, however, that still maintains the shrink wrap.
Right. Sorry, hold on. So it's really up to the weather, is what you're saying, whether one of the others is used?
Again, I think our preference would be option A quite frankly, because of all the logistical challenges presented in option B, and that also allows for the baguettes to be publicly accessible, however, understanding that we also wanted to show an option where the visual attrition of the poles is removed.
Your preference probably would be A.
The preference would be A, that's right, but again, we want to provide the option. Thank you.
Any other questions? And if not, I also have a question. The rest of the section is no longer attached to the shed with six feet of weight. And now, that just opened, did receive three letters in opposition to drop the order. Subway to the line of support and bridge, community, library, and sort of public. Are we ready to have an discussion?
Well, I did oppose it last time. I think this is one of the more extorting pieces of the public realm, maybe as small as it is, but extorting. And I just didn't think it should be prioritized to the degree that it was being prioritized year-round. But it should let it feel reasonable, and it should go away as much as reasonable and feasible during the so-called off-season. So, I believe now that this solution is something that I can support. I think I prefer your preference of A, but I guess maybe we'll just let both of them happen. I don't know what other things she was going to say, but I prefer that because it allows more of the footprint to be used during the winter. And I don't find that it might reduce the structural holes, I guess they're called now, to be elevated in appearance. But I would think with my own appreciation of these so-called, I think it's important.
If I can support this, I would also prefer option A.
I agree with you. I think the option A is definitely preferable. I think the reduction in structures is a good thing.
I think that it's much lighter, much more transparent. The top, that's the way it's seen through, and it's pulled away from the shed, so it leaves a street project that is much more light. So I think that, sadly, most people prefer option A, so we'll do the approval of both so that you have it if you need to change it.
Okay, and matter of 1 Water Street in the Fulton Ferry Historic District, this is an application to construct an attached restaurant pavilion. I note that this proposal, the Commission notes that the Ho shed was originally built in 1930 and was reconstructed in 1995, 2004. Recommended approval noting that the construction of a proposed seasonal restaurant pavilion and prefabricated service container adjacent to the Marine Fire Boat Station Ho shed will not cause the removal of any historic fabric. That the simple form of the pavilion and service container recall the historic use of waterfront ancillary structures for the storage of goods and transportation uses. That the open and seasonal nature of the proposed pavilion will maintain transparency that preserves views and maintains the connections between the historic district and the waterfront. That the playful use of materials, including wood cladding, fabric awning, aluminum wraps in docking rope and brass nautical lights references the use of these materials and features traditionally found on boats, piers, and on working waterfronts. And that the sighting of the pavilion and container with separation from the Ho shed and from the perimeter of the pier will not overwhelm or detract from these structures.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you. We're going to move to public hearing, I choose first, on Slide Number 1. LPC 1-9-38722, application for certificate of appropriateness of rower broken block 12 for lots of 66. 1511 Pacific Street, the Crown Heights 3 Historic District, painted mock. Application is to construct an attached restaurant.
Good morning Commissioners, James Lucille, Preservation Staff. 1511 Pacific Street is a 15 and a half foot wide vacant lot on the north side of Pacific Street between Kings and Avenue and Albany Avenue, on the northern end of Crown Heights North 3 Historic District. The site formerly had a single-story garage that was moved prior to designation of the district in 2015. Proposal is to construct a four-story, two-family row house at the plane of the existing two-story row houses that match the height of the adjacent four-story apartment house. Architect Alexander Lutowski will walk you through the proposal.
Hello, Alexander Lutowski, Wiltshire Park. As mentioned before, we're looking at Crown Heights North District. We are on the edge of the district, through the concrete, on the corner. In fact, that's us right there, on the corner and at the boundary end of the district. This would be the vacant lot. This lot beside the garage has been there since the beginning of time vacant and today they intend to make history. This is how the lot looks today. As per our zoning regulations, the building will be aligned with the neighbors. Requiring a 12-foot porch under our setback. The cellar, along with the basement level and the first floor, is one family. We decided to do a beautiful master bedroom suite on the first level. Walking up the stairs, you enter this stairwell here, which leads you into the second family and living room area combined with a bedroom in the third floor. With a private terrace that is accessed by a vaulted. The vaulted is intentionally shifted to the left to be less visual impact in the street. These are the settings, the cellar, basement, 1-2-3, the vaulted. This elevation represents how we intended to be contextual to our neighbors. You can notice these arches, which are reminiscent of the building to the left. These window details are reminiscent of the building to the left as well. The doorway, we try to as close as possible match this row house to the right. And this one, if you can find any guidance, we decided to do similar designs as the above windows. The material that we're using is going to be brick, not veneer brick. And here, we're using cast brownstone. We are going to be using veneer on the side where it was exposed, you'll see that in the later elevation. The rear facade is stone, on the no circumstances would be given, stone with this sort of design color. As you can see from the street, this is the line of sight. The vaulted is angled intentionally, even though we intended to be a tough square vaulted originally, but it will be angled so it will be again as less visual impact in the street. And on the side, we are going to be using brick veneer. Elevation of the building. If you notice this gap, here, it's about a foot and a half gap. Our building is, as per zoning regulations, a zero-lot line building. Our neighbor sets back from his property line a foot and a half. Rendering some how we intend the building to look like. Streetscape. Additional views. Here we have some details of the renderings, you can see the rendering of the door, the little narrow gap here, window details, where the inspiration came from. The closed door, detailed as the neighbors. Corners, detailed as the neighbor to the left. And...
Do you have any questions?
Any other questions?
Small questions. You really want to have the his closet larger than her closet?
It was a family decision.
I have a question about the windows. So you've chosen to do the arch windows at the top floor, looking to the adjacent block building. But are the windows themselves actually archers? There's a panel at the top that conforms to the arch? It looks to the elevation, goes up behind the arch.
It's a two-piece, it's a two-part window. The window has an official circular, a glass on top.
So it depends, you have all that goes to the top line of the house? Does it fold that way in the elevation? Are there any questions?
The neighbor's property sets back about a foot and five inches from his property line. We are zero-lot line as per zone. So the closed corners will be five glass and the windows will be all the way zero?
Aluminum or aluminum five glass?
Aluminum.
Any other questions at the moment? Is there anyone who would like to speak on this application? We do have a resolution from Committee Board 8 recommending approval of the application. And I know that you were sort of looking to your context to do huge, huge, but you have, are you really proposing to actually replicate details from either the row house or the tenement building? Are you going to try to make a new road?
No, I think our intention is to get as close as possible as the neighbors. Not replicate, but get as close as possible as actual structure.
So a follow-up question for that is the size of the brick. Is the size of the brick accurately shown in your drawing?
It's out of proportion, and probably will be a similar design brick as the...
A standard-sized brick?
Yes, yes, yes.
This one's almost on the four by eight or something.
That hatches up on the end of the...
Alright, because that's very important to, if we get that right.
Okay, any other questions? Want to move to closing hearing? So, we have a lot that never had a building on it, it's a little bit smaller than its other lots in Wilt. And so I think, you know, the presence of the building could help strengthen the streetscape here and frustrate this particular design for a certain contextual, maybe, which is adjacent buildings. Because it's a transitional building, they just stepped to the... One question I had, and maybe you can think about it in the comments, whether you really wanted to actually replicate one of the other, or create other buildings. So maybe some thoughts on the details.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but they are trying to contextual, and I take it maybe this is from the neighborhood buildings, but I think that because of pulling both, the small row house and the tenement, it's a mixed message. And I think that they're looking to benefit from having some of its own identity rather than trying to replicate. You know, the height is, it came to a tenement, but there isn't the door, the stoop from the row houses next to it. I think it's sort of a hybrid, doesn't really come together fully.
Well, let me just go back to our kind of standard thing. Row houses and cast iron architecture, I think, are the most frequently riffed on typologies that we see. And sometimes we see very, almost literal copies of the old context, and sometimes we see very exhilarating, if not even over-exaggerating, over-enthusiastic responses in terms of new architecture. This seems to be, you know, our start-up, is the end of the segment. It's not, you know, it's not what I would do certainly, but that's not the point here. I think we're trying to understand what this applicant is wanting to do. That's what we're trying to do here, not really redesign. But I think there is something to be worked on. I think, does it have to be quite that high, would be one question I would have. The cornice, I guess there's a section somewhere, but the cornice period usually supports the whole head of the main. I think the brick work is going to be critically important, actually. I don't know if every woman I look around when she does it, this is what this applicant wants to do. I think, and has every right to do that, the question is, does it all get it as good as it could be? And is appropriate? A few things, but generally speaking, again, I wouldn't have designed this, but I think...
The design itself is appropriate, just for...
I agree with Fred, and I think you did the cornice, actually, the ground on the cornice is a bit, I don't know, I probably by a foot and a half, almost two feet, just by lowering the cornice.
I agree with those comments. I think the part it's wrong is that the building is very narrow and very tall, and so it's taking leashes on a shorter squatter image next to it. And that cornice makes it even more disproportionate. So I'm fine with the design generally, but they need to take it down just a little bit. I'm not talking about playing on the floors, I'm talking about making a little bit squatters and sort of step transition from the... I'm talking about making a little bit squatters and sort of step, transition from the building to right to the tenement to left. And, uh, other than that, we're giving step, sort of details on the front.
Yeah, I would agree as well. Actually, it's, I suppose the cornice. And the building might not, if the, if the cornice can be reduced, the building, you know, the height might not need to come down, which I think from a usability standpoint, I mean, not usability, but just because the building's so narrow, I think the building would be helpful if the height didn't come down too much. And I appreciate the fact that the tenant wants to fit in. And it seems like if there can be a little bit of a reduction, it would just...
All right, so Michael, Diana, what do you have?
So I think we do an approval. We have modifications to look at lower and simplifying or lowering a little bit the cornice. And they, they look at stack on all of the...
I don't disagree with anything anybody said, but was, what I, what I would suggest, if they wanted to explore it, I think one of the things that makes this so jarring is that it's really trying to xeroxed, like a tenement left while xeroxed in the door to the right. But it's at the plane of all, of brownstones to the right, which are all two-story brownstones instead of brick walls. So maybe if they, if they just change the material on lower level to do brownstone or over brownstone, it would, it would help it blend better to the, to the placement that it's in without changing out. Maybe the height suggestions are a bit different. I think the, the material, the material is really kind of making that pull towards the tenement, but it's, it's really not working because it's set back so far. So maybe if, you know, if it was, if it was, if it continued the brownstone across, it might, it might help it blend better.
But aren't there other buildings in this row?
Not in, not immediately adjacent, not, not immediately to the right. It's a pretty sizable row, it's like, and they're all pretty new form.
In effect, in effect, this is a very narrow building. It could, it could be higher, I'd say, in that issue, you know?
Okay, all right. So why don't we approve the modifications for the lower end of cornice and just make sure the details are developed down. But then for the suggestion that they can continue to explore materials and then come back to the vision.
Sarah? I'm just thinking if they're willing to consider it now, they wouldn't want to come back. And then if you want to ask the applicant to...
Do they know?
Can they do that with a paper approval?
Well, I think if you start to consider a brownstone facade, you might want to consider the details.
I would want to see that.
Got it.
So, but the question is, if then, if they don't want to... They have an approval, they have approval.
So, in a matter of nineteen dash thirty-eight seven through to thirteen, the Pacific Street, around quite north, uh, three historic district, they have not the applications to construct a new building. I note that the neighboring mid-block buildings at Pacific Street consist of three A Y two and three-story over basement row houses, all originally constructed in the eighteen eighties. And that four-story apartment buildings are located at the end of the block. I further note that a single-story barrage of fans formerly occupied the site and were demolished prior to the designation of the historic district. I recommend approval, and we should find that the construction of a new building on State and Hough will fill in a gap in the street wall and strengthen the character of the streetscape. That a four-story building setback from the property line and aligning the town plan with the row houses could be harmonious with a row of two-story over basement row houses to the east and will serve as a transitional element between them and the larger four-story apartment houses to the west. That the design of the building is based on the typical nineteenth century row house form with an area way, gray basement, parlor floor edge with set stoop, regular punched blended openings and cornice, all consistent with the acquisition of buildings and area ways throughout the streetscape and district. That the materials of the building include new brownstone tinted cast stone and brick at the front facade and brick veneer at the block line facade would be keeping the materials of other buildings in the streetscape. That the proposed three-way window penetration with one of the ones double-hung aluminum windows and profile brick walls would recall other row houses like this block. That the rooftop stair bulkhead will be flat with stucco and will be located toward the larger apartment building, minimizing its visibility and allowing it to let the roof stay. That the footprint of the building will not project further into the block than the adjoining row houses. And that stucco clad rear facade will not be visible from any public thoroughfare. And its simple design featuring a high solid void ratio and simple punched blended openings will harmonize with the rear facades of other kind of buildings on the block. I recommend, or I heard that, uh, that the height of the, that the height of the building be adjusted to be modestly shorter than the adjacent four-story apartment building, providing a better transition between the row houses and the taller building. And that working with staff, uh, the overall design of the new building be refined and that the applicant also explore, uh, new materials for the facade.
So the, the modification is that they lower the cornice and, um, and work with the staff on developing the details. And then that would be the devotion. And then separate from devotion would be encouragement to continue to explore materials.
Second.
All favoring? Okay, we'll do that on the...
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, we move to the next item, number two, L P C twenty dash zero one two nine zero. Application for a certificate of appropriateness of Brooklyn and Lot Lot eighty-three Lot eighty-two. Ninety-three St. Mark's Avenue, Prospect Heights Historic District. A title, a title with style of the house, called T B T sixty-nine, two seven four. Application is to construct a new...
Good morning, Commissioners, Elizabeth Dieter, Preservation Staff. The item before you is ninety-three St. Mark's Avenue. The building is located on the north side of St. Mark's Avenue between Flatbush and Carlton Avenues within the precinct activities, Heights Historic District. The proposal before you today is to extend the existing cellar at the rear and construct a three-story rear yard addition. Here we can see images of the proposed volume of the addition, which will not be visible from any public thoroughfares. In this block plan, we can see that a portion of this donut is within the boundaries of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. And within that area, there are two full-height rear yard additions in blue, one three-story addition in green, two two-story additions in yellow, and two one-story additions in red that are currently existing. The proposed three-story addition we see here in purple. Here we can see some existing conditions of the front facade of the building, which is part of a row. In these floor plans, we can see the proposed extension in each floor. And the applicant will then see a greater detail about this later on. The proposed three-story addition will feature brick plating with the stucco coating, wood windows and door assemblies, and two projecting five-foot balconies at the first and second floors. And some guardrails installed in the roof. Um, here we can see existing conditions photographs of the rear facade as well as, um, a blue shots of the neighbors, um, to give you some context for the rear yard. The applicant is here to provide additional information about the proposal and to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Let's take a name to the record.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Shara. Uh, here we have a, uh, new proposed rear facade. What we're trying to propose, uh, what we're going to be using as materials is, uh, actual bricks, no brick veneers. Uh, we are using, uh, the existing, I'm sorry, uh, brick at the top, proposed bricks, and a, we're trying to keep the facade as close as possible as what the existing is and to make the facade as well. They are punched open toward these doors, the terrace on the third, on the third floor, balconies on the second and on the first floor as well. In terms of... I can run the way back real quick with you, because, um, so on the basement level, we are proposing a single family, which has a two bedroom back and, and a sort of rear yard. On the first floor to the third floor is going to be a single family, um, going all the way to the second, third floor. That's pretty interesting.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, the, the windows and windows are shown, especially the doors. It looks like either a two-inch frame or a three sides and nothing on the bottom. Are those like personalized frameless doors? What's the plan for those?
Um, yeah, we're trying to keep the, the frame as minimal as possible. Or just to kind of match these windows as well.
And the window, we don't say wood window?
Uh, yeah, it's going to be aluminum window with the, uh, the bronze kind of finish.
So it says wood frame window, that's not really accurate?
The inside of it is going to be, I mean, the actual structure of this, but the outside is more about aluminum.
So it's a aluminum?
Basically, yeah.
Are you, are you enlarging the fourth floor members?
I'm sorry.
On the fourth floor, is it existing?
Yeah, so on the fourth floor, sorry, no, this, yeah, we're trying to leave the, the openings of what is on existing, but we said what we're doing is in the middle, we're just proposing the floor.
Yeah, so what's like the margin of this frame?
Um, we're trying to match it to the same height as what is over here existing.
Yeah, so if they're, thanks here. It looks like we're opening the windows as well as the...
On the lower floors, yes, we are.
And on the...
Now, yeah. It's like six foot two and then six foot seven?
Uh, no, it's, six foot seven is towards the, uh, the top of, um...
You're going to actually say the same as you... Rocco, yeah, Rocco though.
Yeah, Rocco, we, I actually think it was going to be six foot...
So you are marginally late, obviously. Yeah, if they are six foot two on the left, right? Then if they go to six foot five or six foot seven, sounds like they're bigger.
Actually, it wasn't supposed to be that way. It's supposed to stay the same as that.
Okay, can you go to, um, page four, page four? I guess I just got the comments. So the adjacent buildings have one and two-story additions, if they have additions?
Yeah, the adjacent, um, the adjacent buildings, um, to where we are. This one has a one-story extension. This, these two have a full, um, a full story extension, basically full floor out of that.
Yeah, I'm going to...
In other words, if they add it on top, it's only going to...
Well, it's been, it's been there, yeah.
There's no addition in the back, there's an addition on...
There's a slight addition over here. See it bumping out?
For this one? And that's, that goes from, from the very ground to the very roof?
Uh, yes.
So they're a little taller and a little deeper. And then the other extensions?
This is the one that's, this one right here? Maybe it'd be this one right here, so it's slightly bumping out.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the other additions are lower but relatively deep?
Correct, yeah. So the ones in yellow are two stories of blue, and, uh, the guy would be six stories of red.
Any other questions?
I have a question about the, the top floor, the, the existing facade. Currently it's stucco. And showing the new elevation that it's going to be worth, so how do you think the applicant would be planning to do?
We are, we're trying to provision break basically, this is from the original stucco. Breaks are fast, so it will be the proposed stucco.
So proposing they keep it in brick?
Yeah.
Is it currently stucco?
It is currently stucco, yeah.
Remove the stucco and keep the original brick?
No, there is no brick, there's just stucco. They're going to remove the stucco and just...
There's a brick, it's not, it's not, oh, it's brick, not, it's not, on the right, right?
Oh, yeah.
Why don't we take questions, we're going to see what happens here in the speed, and we'll come back to you. Give the calling.
Good morning, Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to testify on behalf of Prospect Heights Neighborhood. But the penalty counts it. The application is constructed without bulkhead of a three-story rear yard addition. It is twenty-five eight three feet wide, whole building with a twelve point seven five feet deep. Substantial interior renovations include the addition of an elevator serving to the top three floors. P H N D C believes that the depth and openness of rear yards of residential blocks is a key part of the whole historic character of the Prospect Heights Historic District. We have also consistently argued that maintaining three punched openings in stories above the harbor floor retains visual continuity along the rear facades of houses in the historic district. We believe that three-story addition at ninety-three St. Mark's Avenue would detract from the historic context in the interior block and set an undesirable precedent for future applications. Our objection to this proposal is consistent with the record. In the decades since designation, no three-story rear yard addition not mitigated by adjacent structures of people or greater bulk has been approved from the Prospect Heights Historic District. Of the twenty-three applications for rear yard additions, five were one stories tall, fifteen were two stories tall, two were three stories, and one was four. All of the one and two-story extensions were approved. One three-story addition at three oh seven Sterling Place was rejected by the Commissioners in twenty thirteen. A three-story addition at three oh one Park Place, between existing three and four-story additions that preceded designation, was approved in twenty eighteen. And a four-story addition at two twenty Park Place that aboxed a much longer sidewall of an apartment building at two twenty-two Park Place, was approved by the Commissioners in twenty sixteen. P H N D C therefore recommends that the proposed addition be reduced to less than three stories, and the top two stories of the building retain their original punched windows. Taking special note that the applicant has allowed the building to deteriorate since designation, we further recommend L P C monitor the progress of construction to ensure damage to the property and its neighbors does not occur. Thank you again for the opportunity to submit these comments.
Thank you. Bethany, can you add that?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to submit comments. I haven't spoken in years. I really appreciate that you have this process. Um, I live next door to the proposed, to the applicant's proposal, I live at ninety-five St. Mark's Avenue. Um, and I strongly oppose this proposal. And as you'll hear from many of my neighbors who are here as well, this is a, it's a historic district that we take very seriously. And I think underlying a lot of the objection in addition to the plans itself is that this applicant has completely, um, has not valued, has allowed the property to deteriorate for the last ten years since he purchased it. He's let it, he evicted all of the tenants first and then let it deteriorate for ten years, but, uh, to the point where it was literally falling down and he had to restore it. However, this particular property, sorry, I'm a little emotional. Um, this ninety-three St. Mark's Avenue is one of five highly mixed town. Row houses built in the eighteen seventies, perform a row of five identical brownstone facades. And that will remain remarkably intact according from the, um... preservation, the historic designation that was done to create the Prospect Heights Historic District. Um, that's true of there as well. There are only four rear extensions on the entire block of 30 row houses between Clapish and Carlton Alloves. All were built before the block was landmarked. Not one extension has been built since the historic designation. And I know that the drawing suggested that there is a full height extension. This is completely wrong and I, I don't know where that comes from, but I'm very skeptical of that representation. As to the next neighbor, I of course object to this because the extension would block the light and airflow. And in addition, um, this owner has shown himself to be completely irresponsible and disrespectful of his neighbors and the landmark district itself. After purchasing the property in 2010, which had a great deal of historic character at the time, after evicting all the tenants, many could rouse or leave, left the building empty and unprotected. Eventually the gutter and windows were broken and left open so that the interior was exposed to rain, snow and sleet and was destroyed. Pipes froze and burst and flooded our basement several times. Damaged property that deenter tenants had stored it and the owner each time refused to compensate us with the cost of the cleanup for the damaged property. When we alerted the owner of problems such as broken windows, rabid infestation, or squatters are currently living in the house, he ignored us. To this day, garbage has left a friend of ours. Um, last point I want to say is that the owner has repeatedly lied about his plans for the renovation and in bringing his proposals to the community board, he actually submitted fraudulent documents with Photoshop images that appeared and designed to appear that he had notified us of his plans when he actually did not. So he's deliberate and trying to manipulate and deceive the community. She not only rewards it by granting him a license to disregard the historic landmarking of the property and causes neighbors more harm. Thank you very much for considering this.
Jonathan Lederberg?
Good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm here today to oppose the application of the extension at 93 St. Marks Avenue. I submitted a letter opposing this application, which is available to your review, but I'd just like to make three points during this morning. My partner and I moved to 87 St. Marks Avenue in June of 2013 with the understanding that the houses in the Donut Hole were all covered by landmark preservation aside from the HPD building map that is not covered. The depth of gardens and the resulting life order to the houses is a distinguished characteristic for Prospect Heights. And it was a significant contributing factor in the purchase bar code. Permitting the extension of 93 St. Marks Avenue creates a precedent for other homeowners in the Donut Hole to seek similar permissions that would significantly alter the character of the neighborhood in ways that seem contrary to the purpose of landmark preservation. My second point is that the owner of 93 St. Marks Avenue has shown disdain for the review process. By repeatedly failing to meet the notice requirements for the land use committee of the community board eight, his first application for a four story extension was denied unanimously. The second application for a three story application was denied with one dissent. Despite this, the owner has chosen to apply for approval of the three story application, or three story extension here. Granting such approval will undermine the land use committee and the community board, ignore the stated objections of neighbors and set a bad precedent for others by sending a message that poor behavior will be rewarded. Finally, I oppose the approval of any extension to 93 St. Marks Avenue. However, in the event that LPC chooses to grant permission to the extension, I review limit the extensions to a one story extension recommended by the land use committee of CBA, the full CBA, and that is supported by the North Prospect Heights Association. This recommendation was granted and two presentations to the land use committee have included significant input from our neighbors and owners that will be affected by the extension in St. Donut Hole. I understand that PHNDC proposes the approval of a two story extension based on other areas of Prospect Heights. And while I believe that all wishes should be turned, I disagree with PHNDC in finding their proposal objectionable in this case because, first, it offers a solution that was neither sought by the applicant nor offered by CBA. It ignores the wishes of the persons directly impacted by the proposed extension and it undermines the public hearing structure of the community board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Elaine Watson, Watson, followed by Louis Luis Galdeary.
Good morning and thank you for your time. I'm here as an individual, but I'm also here because I represent the North Prospect Heights Association. It's our community organization with membership of over 400 people. And 93 St. Marks Avenue is within our catchment area. And you have a letter before, you just want to highlight a few points. Also, of the 11 member board that we have, we are in support of reducing this to a one story extension only. So I represent that board as well in the organization. And the point aspect compared to many, many neighbors, I do not live on this block, but care very much about Prospect Heights. And so finally, we are especially concerned by the erosion of landmark protection in this part of Prospect Heights that we in fact represent. It runs to the very edge of the current Prospect Heights Historic District. Allowing the extension would undoubtedly invite by the proposals to remove landmark protection and spur even more construction in a neighborhood that is currently under pressure from unprecedented Atlantic Yards construction. Now, Atlantic Yards is not within the landmark catchment area, I understand that, but it literally abuts it. And with this kind of extension being approved, it would invite others. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Louis Galdeary, followed by Peggy and Aladia Rodriguez.
Okay, good morning. Thank you for taking public comments. Um, I want to tell you that landmark protections in our neighborhood, in our part of Prospect Heights have been a success story. Um, within the Donut Hole that you're being asked to consider, which consists of about 75 buildings, there have been no extensions built since the historic district was established. Um, and those that were built that were pointed out before were built well before landmark status. So this part of the historic district comes close to what I believe is called pristine. It is untouched since the designation. Now, the proposal for a three story extension at 93 St. Marks Avenue was made with no regard for the historic features of the neighborhood, including the extra gardens or neighbors' quality of life. The massive extension, which is essentially a second building placed onto this existing building, would block light, decrease privacy and put property values at risk. Approving these plans would also set a risky precedent, as you've heard from other of my neighbors, and induce others to build. I mean, certainly we would want to go out and claim some life after our life's blocked. Uh, that would rapidly alter the character of the neighborhood, undermine landmark protections and virtually withdraw the northwest boundary of the historic district. Now, the community board, as you've heard, has voted to withhold support for this proposal pending reduction to no more than one above ground story. But even this grants too much leeway to a proven bad actor. The owner has warehoused the building for a decade, left it exposed in the elements and allowed it to fall into terrible disrepair to the point where some neighbors urge that the city should treat this as a case of demolition by neglect. He has incurred multiple violations, including four oath or ECB class one or has violations, which are pretty serious, when DOB inspectors determined the building was at risk of collapse and we share a wall with that building in 95 St. Marks Avenue. The proposal does not address any practical need as the owner resides out of state in Allen County, Indiana and practices medicine in Fort Wayne. It appears we are being asked to remove landmark protections, which have been successful in our neighborhood in order to facilitate an out of towners' real estate speculation scheme. So as you can tell, our neighborhood is united in urging you to reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy speaking for Aladio, also with Rodriguez, followed by Janet Clancy.
Hi, good morning. Thanks for having us. Um, so I'm going to speak on behalf of my mom, who's the neighbor of 91 St. Marks. She actually has a one story extension that she uses for her family, it's a kitchen. We all go and gather as a family all the time. I think the biggest issue that my parents, my dad's retired to the servant, my mother, you know, one of Aladio's kids, a wonderful, lovely, republed, day care preschool, all around Brooklyn, is that it's community and people care about where they live and the block that we live on, the safety and everything. The one story that we have that was just after this owner left, it was such disrepair. There was very, like the one hurricane day in 2019, the frames of the building are falling off, the glass is broken. There are shards of glass in the front of the walkway. There's shards of the wooden frame of the windows. And we call him from every number to say, hey, what's going on? And nothing. He ignores our calls. Literally, my mother took my other phone because he didn't have the number. And that's what we pay for. I don't live here. Well, I'm not there. No, I'm not there. So our main concern is outside, you know, my mom's at Plumby Amberberg. There's lots of birds, there's lots of food for all the birds to eat, she always says. And we're never going to deny anyone their ability to grow and build their property as it is. But he has a property manager, never has. He wastes everything. There's refuse, gas and meat tanks in front of his building. Not one of us on that block, with all these children coming from our schools after our parents pick them up, want to see that, want to have our children in danger. And I'm sorry, you have to care. This, nothing wrong with him running a bell home, but clearly he's building a building on the back of his house for a real estate scheme to have four families living in there. And how is he going to manage that? He barely manages this. Is there going to be a property manager on site? Is he going to be clean? A one story extension? But we have issues with that. Everyone he hires, men knocking on my mother's door saying, do you know they're going to touch him? Because we haven't gotten paid. That's egregious. You don't do that to working people. You just don't. And so we, we really feel strongly as his neighbor, strongly as a community, very strongly, that he just wouldn't even build to cope. Even if he gave him the okay. He's not trustworthy. He's never here. So, right, listen in here. Um, so we really hope that the board, outside of all the landmarks and the precedent that whichever one says, that they consider that, you know, our job is to preserve our community, to make sure that the people living there, we love a family who cares to make it their home. And that would be really great. Still make a million dollars, helping more. So we hope we take them into consideration again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Janet Clancy, followed by Patty Higgin.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak today. Um, my neighbors have really done a lot of research and I'm going to echo a few things they said. I live in, uh, only by 22 Bergen Street and share a rear property line with this building. So I've been looking at the rear of this building material now for 20 years. Um, I was there before the building got sold. And for the last 10 years, I really thought it was abandoned because there was so little, like, really zero units and so little activity there. The back door was propped open, there was squatters in the building. Um, more recently, the, I did speak to somebody who was sort of putting those white window frames and they said they weren't getting paid, felt unsafe on the job site because structural work was being ignored for window rest and they're putting up those white window frames. I, in terms of the addition, what I'm looking at doesn't really flow with anything I look at across the property lawn as I look to the right and left as I stand in my backyard. The one story extension on the rear of 91 is basically a living room added for a family that already exists there. Didn't add occupants to the footprint of the building. On the left, there's an addition which is basically an open room deck. It doesn't add occupants to the footprint of the building. And my, I don't know the history of violations such, I just know for nine years I've been looking at a project that's been not managed, basically abandoned sporadically or anonymous. Every once in a while, my backyard will fill up with trash and it'll sit there for eight or nine months and then last year they took away the trash and put in window frames. But I just, in my experience, the owner of this building, who I've never seen who's never notified me of any work that's been planned on site, is just not someone you can trust in a large project. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Patty Higgin, followed by Dan Jacobson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for letting me speak. Um, my name is Patty Higgin. I have been resident at 117 St. Marks Avenue, just up the street from 93 St. Marks Avenue, for 14 years. 10 years ago, when 93 St. Marks, the last remaining SRO of the block, was purchased by the wife of Dr. Mohamed Ahmad of Indiana, the doctor said he was eager to fix up the house and live there. This was good news to the neighbors. When he asked, we were happy to recommend lawyers and contractors to help him bring the building back to life. Alas, for 10 years now, neighbors have had to call the police, the Department of Buildings, the fire department to report dangerous safety hazards caused by the owner's history of neglect. From his residence back home in Indiana, he has repeatedly flooded the abiding buildings at 91 and 95 St. Marks Avenue whenever his Brooklyn pipes froze and burst. He has sent mold through the walls, left the roof, uh, windows and doors open to the elements. In 2013, squatters took advantage of the unsecured building and moved in. They even put up curtains. Yet, in 2013, Dr. Ahmad reiterated by email to Daphne Eviatar, who I just heard from, at 95 St. Marks, who had repeatedly suffered structural damage due to his do nothing, demolition by neglect style of ownership, quote, "I want to fix this house more than you because I want to live there and earn rental revenues," close quote. Yet, 93 St. Marks has continued to deteriorate. Broken windows, trash, rats. A fed up neighbor once posted a big sign, "I soar" on 93. Now, after 10 years, Dr. Ahmad and wife, having earned the honest distrust of their neighbors, proposed to construct a massive rear extension on 93 St. Marks Avenue and asked LPC for a certificate of appropriateness. What? No way should they be allowed to construct an extension of any sort. How about a certificate of inappropriateness? Since the Prospect Heights Historic District came into being, the block, 1143 Donut, has remained unblemished and undiminished by rear extensions, so far free of grandiose real estate speculation. This neighborhood takes the Prospect Heights Historic District seriously. We therefore ask the Landmark Preservation Division to deny support for any extension for this proven bad neighbor, Dr. Ahmad and wife Bushra Rashin. We do not want our historic buildings defaced either the front or rear. Please, LPC, just say no. Thank you.
Here's Dan Jacobson.
Good morning. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I live at 85 St. Marks Avenue. I don't have any prepared remarks, but I'm here to speak in opposition to the project for all the reasons stated by my neighbors. We've lived there for more than 22 years and that building definitely has become an eyesore of the block and is a detriment to the neighborhood. No one else has anything built like this proposal in their backyards. And I, it's a fundamental question to me is, what good is historic status if someone can build a building that's crossing you like this that is proposed?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Yes, please come up and state your name.
My name is Susan Sullivan and I live at 101 St. Marks Avenue. And I just, I'm in accord with all of my neighbors about remarks, but I just want to say that... And I just, I'm in accord with all my neighbors about remarks, but I just want to say that we actually have the big extension. And I wasn't going to speak because of that, but our extension was built in 1890. And so, that should be taken into it.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, and we have, in addition to the letters submitted by the people who spoke, and we've also received two emails in opposition. And as was stated, we have a resolution from the Community Board VIII that recommends disapproval of the application and recommends restricting it to one-story and all. Would you like to respond to the comments?
I think, you know, one thing is for everybody, commissioners, the applicant, the public, the commission reviews applications for additions and that doesn't mean that the protections are being pulled back. The commission sometimes finds additions to be appropriate within the context and we carefully look at the context when we evaluate the size and depth, design and materiality of additions. So perhaps you can respond to the comments about its size in relation to its neighbors?
So, um, yes, we were presenting a four-story extension before and we were did project this on that, so we proposed a three-story. It's not as deep of an extension, it's only about the 12 foot six by 21 foot 10 is what we're trying to propose. Basically, I can't speak for the owner's characteristics in the past. I just returned recently and we're just trying to explore some ideas to see what we can do with the extension. Basically, we are trying to bring the building back up to code. I understand there were violations issued and both the DOB or BOE violations. ECD, there were violations, which were all resolved back in 2016, 13, and so on. Basically, our goal is just to bring the building back up to code and to be finished so the owners can do whatever they have to do with the buildings.
That's okay. Are there any questions? Dan?
Yeah, on the plan, in the cellar, you show, um, this sort of square, CMBA, this is Harry, CMG wall down to cellar for continuous support, elevator hoist shaft.
Yeah, we were, I should have planned for an elevator first, but then we removed that idea. So that's probably going to be removed as well.
So there's no elevator required?
Yeah, yeah.
I have a follow-up question about roof access. I don't see any means of accessing it.
Um, the, we, we were trying to put a bulkhead, but not anymore. So what we most likely will do is probably just put a hatch here somewhere that we can have it pull down to get the roof to be covered. But there is no direct staircase leading up to it.
So no rooftop bulkhead?
Uh, no, there was no, it was, we were protecting under the block, but not anymore.
Just why did you eliminate the rooftop bulkhead?
Um, we just didn't have time to actually get all the minds out for the removal of the bulkheads, so plus it was just an extra addition that we were making about doing. It wasn't something that was, you know, mandatory, so we just kind of just removed it to be good. Plus, the staff's the job of the DOB. Uh, it's with plans Amber Phase, we have, I think, roughly 10 to 15 objections already removed and so many has been cleared out. So, we still have a few more left.
So there's no objection for having a bulkhead or rooftop access?
No, no, DOB is okay with that as long as it's in the hyper requirement. So we are all within the hyper requirement with the bulkhead, but now we are removing it, so we're just going to get the original.
It's a two thousand, right?
It's, now it's a two thousand, correct, yes. So, I think, you can give me a C-10.
I'd like to just, if you could put up, um, Z103, again, I just would like to go through what exists, just a little unclear, this colorful map with, I don't understand. Uh, if you could just tell me what, where rear additions exist and how tall they are.
Yeah, maybe just start with pointing out your building on both the map as well as the aerial photo.
Sure. So this is us up here with the purple, proposed extension and the video's right here.
Yeah, put a focus on that.
Right here, correct. Uh, the blue are the two extensions right here that are full-floor extensions, but these were in the past. Um, the red are the one-story extensions, which is right here. Um, and this one would be somewhere here. This is a two-story extension, correct. Uh, so is this one as well, a two-story extension. And, and then three-story extension is this one right here.
So there are two one-story extensions, two two-story extensions and one three-story extension. And I think we don't have the top of the building. It's like...
And we are not actually, I'm afraid, we're just about 12 foot seven.
Yes, Diana?
Yeah, I was just, the other members, I was looking at the, this is the mandate, we have one of them, which is, uh, a boiler, so, but they had 21 originally, and they're 33 and 11. Obviously, there's been a lot of, so I have a question here for the staff, which is, uh, the, it's been a lot stated by the management of the facility, which didn't appear from the system as well. Uh, is staff working on some of the, are there issues still that staff, everything is already staffed, but the current condition is open to front and side, is it possible?
You know, John Wise is the person who handles all of the energy money, but cases, and he can design things and, as a general matter, you know, John, he spends a lot of time reaching out and talking to owners before formal litigation or complaints are begun. And he also is very sort of careful as to what, which ones he starts and moves forward. I don't know, I can, you can hear him, he can now come in to the watch, know whether it's his back one of the buildings on his watch list. It may not be considering the building as far as, I don't think, a hole in his roof and those are the kinds of things where John is particularly concerned about, you know, if there's like a hole in the roof or in the back and filter the elements, stuff like that. So that's what he's completely concerned about.
Yeah, so it may or may not be something we're actively pursuing as a demolition by neglect at this time. However, the staff has had a relationship with the building now, at least for a month, if not longer, working on this application.
Yeah, I would, in terms of, everything is going to be resolved with this application as far as any situation with not repairing the back, which is all over the program. So I sent it to the staff, I was looking at some issues.
Yeah, um, so my understanding is that there are a couple of active LPC permits for work, the part of the side that include things like window replacement and resurfacing and runs and stuff of repairs of that nature. So they, I think they're three years old, there's the lack of, of course, this year, they can be renewed, the extension can keep things going, but that is already part of sort of the bigger project.
And then should any expansion be approved, we would want to ensure that enough base building repairs were done and we're going to ensure the work is performed and safe now.
Yeah, and I was also thinking that because the plans that are presented with are some of my things that aren't being done and there's questions about the size of windows and so forth that, um, in this case, that we're going to have to have close supervision as the details are followed and they're approved. And I know that's, we have so many staff that that's, it seems like an issue for this particular application.
Of course, in the past, you, one more question for you. Three-story addition at block 73, do you know when that was, was that done on, with the LPC rule or is that gold? I think Liz may have some information, but my understanding is that none of these were done post-destitution.
Yes, that's correct. None of these additions were constructed after 2009 with this district's destitution. So all of these are grandfathered conditions.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Sorry.
It's okay.
Corey, just give us a, and somebody give me a little reminder of what we have done typically, and I know that when there's a lot of additions, we usually align with the neighbor and answer stuff. Here, there, I would say not a lot of additions, but there are a few, but typically, we haven't done, there is it all within that.
Yeah, so, you know, as you know, if there were, then 50% of the buildings of certain of this type have additions, then the staff can actually approve addition that's comparable in terms of depth and height. So when applications come to the commission, it's often because there are not 50% of the buildings, similar buildings, with additions within the block. And so where we're often looking at blocks that have fewer additions and, and the commission has found additions to be appropriate even in that context, looking at what the, you know, if, whether there are predominantly two or three or one-story additions. In this case, let's say it's, you know, sort of half and half to two one-stories and two two-stories. Another thing that we consider is the depth. So in some cases, where it's been sort of mixed, we have gone with a taller height to match the ones that exist within the block, but a shallower depth. So, um, that's sort of the way that we've done it as well, looking at depth and depth or whether to move it back.
Questions, other questions? So that's the motion to close the hearing.
Aye.
Colin Baker?
Aye.
Okay, discussion.
Clearly, the PR problem and the maintenance problem, but it seems like the maintenance problem sounds ready to be solved in this case. But I think, as much as we, at Icicle, we heard a lot of clear, the ill feelings between the neighbors and the owner, I don't think we should necessarily let those reflect on what we approved or disapproved today, which should be done on merits of the application. Um, I think that the, based on those barriers and looking at the site, I think that two, anything more than two stories would be too much. I think that the material should not be general brick or regular brick. I think that the, uh, the ones clearly need to be made more careful with the convention and details of the site. I'll, I'll give you 20 bucks if you can find it, I have to already ignore this, but the one was on the surface side. But, you know, I don't, I don't think that's happening anytime soon. And I think that reflects a general lack of refinement and fail on the lines that would not serve this district well. Uh, I think that, uh, you know, the, I mean, once, once it's down to two stories, the particulars of the design are much less, you know, kind of like, into the backyard state, and I think they're acceptable. I also think, you know, recent times, single-family, two-family houses that all cried, whined to us how they needed a bulkhead, so I would have just suggested the staff exercise care with that particular issue. Uh, the only reason not to do it was because of, there's been a time to build a, I think that might have been the best example.
Diana?
Yeah, I also think that the extension should not be two stories, given the current extensions in the district and, um, I could, you know, approve a two-story one on the basis that this is, if not extending as far, see that there's a different extending as far from a different issue. I also am very concerned about the quality of the eventual design and construction. Make sure, and I agree with some of those, I mean, like I said, um, if they are doing a two-story, I would see them being able to have a, um, a door, you know, a longer window on the second floor, but I'd like to just keep the penetration as is on those two floors, I think, unless they re-present to us. Because a lot of this, the whole, anyway, the sound is...
Oh, wait, you're right.
You're right, thank you. Okay, so I guess that's it.
Mike?
I agree with my colleague's comments. I also would like to see the full balcony eliminated and either totally eliminated or habitually.
If it comes down to two stories?
On the second.
On the second. Everybody agree with those? Okay. So I think we'll do an approval with modifications to reduce the height two stories, because thankfully it's not as deep as the other additions, eliminate the balcony and work very carefully with the staff on the details of the construction drawings and to ensure that the building is in sound condition before physical work begins.
In the matter of document number OPC20 dash 0129093 St. Marks Avenue, Prospect Heights Historic District, application to reconstruct a rear yard addition. I note that the building's styles, materials, details among the features contribute to the special architectural and historic character of Prospect Heights Historic District. I recommend approval with several modifications, noting that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, the rear yard addition will not be usable for public thoroughfares, the rear yard addition will not project further into the rear yard than other existing rear yard additions in this block, and will not dimension the center of green space. The plane at the top floor of the rear facade will remain intact, thereby preserving the relationship between this building and the adjacent buildings in the row. And the design penetration of the rear facade of the addition will maintain the scale and character of the row house, thereby helping it remain harmonious with its context. However, I find that the three-story added additions not consistent with other additions in the block in a global homeless building and adjacent building in the block, most of which have one or two-story additions, if any. And that the balcony at the second floor is atypical of row houses in this story district, therefore I recommend that the addition be reduced by one floor and the original penetration of the top will be, top two floors, please. And the original penetration of the top two floors be maintained in terms of size and placement of window openings, and that the second floor balcony be changed to a new Juliet balcony or be eliminated, and that the applicant work closely with staff on the detailing of the rear facade features and use standard brick.
Colin Baker, I mean, the pros. So it's approved, those modifications is basically the worst.
Your next item is number three, OPC19 dash 32 to 54 mark, application for a certificate of property innocence in the building of block 2518, block 105 and 149 West 160 East Street, remaining in the front of the apartment, in the middle of the deck of style, in the middle of the corridor, city third, and of the mind, and the application is to install a rear access entrance.
Good morning, commissioners, Korean Division Preservation Staff. Application before you is New Plaza Apartments, an exhibit joint landmark, occupying half existing block between West 168th Street and Nelson and Austin Avenue, as you can see on the map right here. The work will take place at the southwest corner of the complex, which is highlighted in the picture. Working is the removal of existing non-compliant ramps and the installation of two new barrier pre-access ramps at the lower and upper terraces of the main entrance areaway, which leads to the interior apartment beyond, which is hardly important beyond here. Um, the work also includes the installation, the removal of non-historic picket fences at the portico bays on 168th Street and Nelson Avenue, and the installation of new decorative ironwork, which will recall existing architecled ironwork throughout the complex. The commission will note that the ironwork seen in these windows and rooms will be painted black, but it shows white for clarity. I would represent this, if you could, Sam.
So just a little backstory on this, this is a 282 apartment complex, HBD funded. Uh, with that, we have to provide a certain number of ADA units, five percent of two percent of hearing duty parity, uh, which we are doing. Um, and of course, uh, for, uh, the existing ramps that we have here do not comply with any compliance. Uh, we've done a series of different, uh, versions of ramps, uh, switchbacks. And at some point, we actually had, uh, removing existing historic fabric, which we're no longer doing. Um, and, uh, HBD also mentioned that the, uh, front entrance looked like a prison. Uh, so we want to welcome, be a little more welcoming, uh, the entrance arcade. So as you can see here, um, uh, the existing, uh, ramps are roughly, they're not compliant. So we need to make them compliant. They need to be at least thirty feet long with a five-foot landing, uh, which we have, we're showing the render here of what the first ramp A will look like. Uh, so with, along with the ramp, we also have to relocate some of the existing, uh, iron fence that exists there now. Uh, so we have to relocate some fences here. The ramp B, uh, we will be, uh, removing and extending through the walkway. So, uh, most of the tenants use this, these ramps, uh, not only for ADA compliance, but for, uh, laundry, groceries, and deliveries, um, and people with walkers, of course. Uh, so it's very high traffic area. So we want to propose, uh, a more, uh, welcoming ramp so that they can use and, uh, keep the historic, uh, fabric existing and restore that area. And again, this is the main entrance arcade, um, and we will be proposing a new fence that would make it a historic fabric of the, of the site.
Ask a question, sir?
All right, so the ramp now is going to kind of make this turn and then turn, yes, turn, right? So when you're standing on the street at first gate, it's going to have like a double, you're going to see that ramp coming right up behind you, right?
Uh, the railing of the ramp.
Yes. So do the gates open out or open in?
No, those gates will be, um, will not be, right, they're fixed.
Uh-huh. And so the space on the top above the ramp, above the new ramp, that's going to be basically kind of inaccessible well. How do you, you know, what, what's going to happen, go back to the, the proposed? You know, so above the ramp on this image, there's like a rectangle space in the arcade and a rectangle kind of L-shaped space outside. That's now going to have to come off by the ramp. I mean, is that just going to be a place where John pulls up and?
You mean, uh, far, far there?
There.
Yeah, we have two. So this area here, we have a access door from the vents. And also here as well, kind of with the drain, uh, for access to.
And there's, and there's another fence that separates the area where the ramp is from the main entrance? That, that looks like a little line where it's between.
So this fence, right there, that's the fence there? Correct. Existing ramp is a fence in these two years here.
You're going to move that down a bit?
Correct. Correct, if we go back, this is the existing.
Right.
So that is the fence that's existing. Uh-huh. Right now, we have, um, recyclable things in that area. So we would be relocating that to the.
Other questions? We'll take testimony and then come back to Brittany Thomas.
Brittany Thomas, Historic District Council. HTC often sees applications for barrier free access ramps that need finessing to work well aesthetically with a historic building. Here, the proposed ramp is integrated in an intelligent and sensitive way. Replication and integration of the architec ironwork is a welcome bonus to this Bronx landmark. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? And we do have, uh, a member from committee board four who wants supporting the application. Any final questions for the applicant? I must have a motion to close the hearing.
Sir?
Colin Baker? Okay. The discussion, so the, the building currently has two ramps and the proposal is to replace them with reconfigured ramps that would be code. Uh, they do also, by reconfiguring the position one forward one back, um, it actually kind of opens up the plaza terrace. That's very, uh, can be, um, which is a positive. And it tucks the, the ramps to the, to the alcove more necessary to, to live here. Um, any thoughts on these?
I, first of all, thank goodness for the Center of Parks Preservation Commission protecting this historic district, uh, and amazing, amazing complex buildings. Uh, those were, it's great to see Brittany there. But I, I think it's, of course, of course, access for everybody is critical. But I personally think that there must be a way to, to this variable on very zigzaggy ramp without, uh, having to, uh, be right against the exterior gate, uh, and thus create a, a rather discordant, uh, view from the street. Uh, I, I have other concerns. I mean, that you practically, a lot, that they have as wells, that they probably fill up with junk. But, um, uh, that's kind of our problem with this, but, um, I would just ask the work of staff to move the, move the last leg of the ramp so that it's not right up the avenue of the, of the street.
Work of staff to try and move. Others? Okay. What do you agree? So we'll, we'll do a, a, a request that they work the staff to try to move the last leg of the ramp if used at all.
In matter of LPC nineteen three two five four one, one oh five dash one forty-nine west one hundred sixty-eight Street, the Newman Plaza Apartments, individual landmark. The application is to install barrier free access ramps and ironwork. I recommend approval with the town office applications finding that the existing ramps to be removed do not meet current accessibility codes and that the proposed ramps will provide barrier free access into the building without altering or obscuring any significant features of this individual landmark. But the proposed barrier free access ramps will be partially screened by the annual entrance portico and will not be visible within the context of the primary streetways and basades. But the ramp to be installed at the central walkway will be discreet insertion that will not detract from the central garden court and that the straight one will be compatible with the linear quality of the walkway. But the proposed design materials of the ramps, the concrete paving and metal grans with a black finish will harmonize with the materials and color palette of the building and garden court. Now lowering the granite step and sloping a small area of pavement beyond at one portico entrance bay will only require a removal of a very limited portion of historic fabric and will have a discreet presence within the global portico and discreet gate. But the design of the proposed gates at the portico openings will be reminiscent of the architec ironwork found within the garden court and elsewhere on the building. And that proposed work will detract from the special architectural and historic character of this individual landmark. However, I find that the, uh, the last leg of the accessibility ramp is too close to the, um, arcade and that the ultimate work of staff to try to increase the space between the ramp and the arcade.
Second.
Colin Baker? Any questions? So it's approved, you're teaching the work itself.
The next item is number four, LPC twenty dash zero four zero five one. Application for a certificate of appropriate maintenance and renovation of Manhattan Block eighty-seven, block of the plaza. Two forty-five Water Street, South Street, C four Historic District. Three to the bottom style, red hot buildings, all three being thirty-six. Application is to modify storefront openings, uh, sell storefront info and extend the order of the building.
Good morning, commissioners, Brian Blazak preservation staff. And the subject property is two forty-five Water Street, located in the South Street, C four Historic District. The proposal before you today is to remove existing non-historic infill and historic stone water tables from all storefront bays and the installation of new storefront infill featuring wood bulkheads, display windows, and transits. Staff notes that there is a certificate of appropriateness issued in two thousand six for storefront alterations. However, the work was not completed. And at the roof, at the roof, the existing bulkhead, approved at a public hearing in two thousand and five, will be demolished and a new elevator bulkhead and machine room constructed along the baseline perple. The applicants are here to present this proposal and answer any additional questions.
Hi, thank you for having me here today. My name is Jean Lee. I am an associate at HBD Architects and the project manager for renovation at two forty-five Water Street. So we have a few goals for this project. Um, it is to convert the building from two-family to multi-family use at a small commercial space on the ground floor and make the building fully accessible, including the ground floor and roof levels. And we'll also be designing this in the weeks of passing house standards. So we'll be going over the bulkhead and, um, rooftop solar energy system work as well as the storefront installation, installation. So, as I mentioned, um, the building's built in eighteen thirty-six as a warehouse and was last renovated in two thousand and eight. During that renovation, they did brick replacement and repainting. So we think the facade is in pretty good shape. They also replaced the window and cornice during that renovation as well. So we'll start with the storefront installation. And on the next slide, we have our rendered, um, storefront elevation. On the far right is a residential entry. On the far left is a service entry, which also serves as a code required second means of egress for the residential building. And the section three days, um, are the retail entry, uh, retail space. So we're removing the water tables so that we can make these entries fully accessible. And we're extending the glazing down to the height of the historic water table and living dock. Below the glazing is a inset wooden panel and below that will be a four-inch tall stone curb. For the granite architrave in here, we'll strip the paint to expose the existing granite and restore any damaged areas. We do expect that there will be some signage on the storefront, but we'll seek approval for that in a separate process. The storefront system is, uh, wood framed and that will be painted Benjamin Moore Flint, which is a handsome charcoal gray color. The glass, uh, triple glaze will be clear at the retail and residential entries and will have an etched translucent glass at the service entry. And the, uh, stone curb at the base will be a home piece. So the design we're proposing is similar to what you see throughout the South Street Historic District, which is historic openings infilled with a wood and glass storefront system. And in, in this plan, uh, you see that the storefront is set back from the face of the pier. And in the section details, we have a section through the door on the left and through the window system on the right. So going into the bulkhead, um, the driver for the bulkhead change is really accessibility and code requirements for the elevator and stair. Currently, the building has a small elevator here and it serves the first three fifth floors. The elevator we're proposing is larger, but it needs the code required minimums for ADA and stretchers. And it'll also serve the first floor as well as the roof terrace. The current stair also, um, does not meet the code requirements for multi-family use, so we'll be changing that as well. So our goal was to design an efficient core and to push it as far back as possible. And we've really minimized the space in the rear units to do that and while keeping it still usable. The other feature on the roof is the solar energy system, which, uh, is to comply with, uh, newly passed local law from two ninety-four. Uh, we want to keep the roof terrace as an amenity for the residents, so we'll be raising the solar panels above the deck level. So in the elevation on the far right, the taller element is the elevator bulkhead and the lower element is the, uh, solar energy system raised on a canopy. So we'll show you two sightline studies. The first one is through the solar energy system. You can see it, it's raised above the canopy here. We're also replacing a guardrail at the front of the building. Next slide shows the elevator bulkhead. So this is the shaft. The height of the bulkhead is set by several requirements. One is access to the roof. The next is a sixty-foot overrun followed by, um, elevator machine room above the shaft. And to the left of the shaft is a access there to the elevator machine room. It's an open stair, but it will be screened by the same cladding material as the rest of the bulkhead. And to the right is a stair bulkhead, which will have mechanical equipment and, um, a guardrail. So we built a rockup and in these photos, you'll see that there are several tall bulkheads of rooftop additions in the neighborhood. And the bulkhead we're proposing will always be viewed in the context of these other bulkheads. So this is a view from the corner of Water Street and Pax Slip. Next view from Water Street and Beetham where the bulkhead is minimally visible. And this is a view from across the parking lot, um, Pearl Street and Pax Slip. So the bottom left is a mock-up photo and the bottom right is a rendered view. Next view is Pearl Street and Beetham again from across the parking lot. And next, we have the from within the parking lot. And the next view is from within the parking lot closer to Pax Slip. We also, oh, sorry, so for the materials, the bulkhead, we've selected a light gray cement Ibrobor panel to be less visibly obtrusive. Uh, the solar energy system will be raised on a steel structure that will be painted the same Benjamin Moore Flint as the storefront and the underside will have a local black locust wood cladding. So we have some additional photos. This is a photo prior to the two thousand and eight renovation. And you can see sometime between, uh, for the forties and sixties, there was a elevator shaft that was added to the building, um, and with a bulkhead along the Water Street frontage. And these are some adjacent, um, bulkheads in the neighborhood rooftop additions as well. So numbers one and two are buildings that are adjacent to ours and, uh, number three is a rooftop addition on the South Street. So our intent was, um, our intent was to minimize the size of the bulkhead. And in that process, we explored both the traction elevator, uh, which is what we're proposing, as well as the hydraulic elevator. And the hydraulic elevator does allow you to put the elevator machine room on the first floor, but it needs to be above the flood plain, which means that they'll take up significant square footage from the retail space. And in addition, there is only one elevator in this building. So the speed and reliability were really important factors in the design. And the traction model that we're proposing is far superior in both of these aspects. And that's the overview of the scope for the rooftop.
Liza?
I have a few questions. First of all, um, what's the reason that you moved the granite bulkheads and the two windows that don't have doors? Is that for aesthetic uniformity or is it for some other reason?
Are you referring to?
To, to show windows that don't have doors.
Yes, because we have three entries, um, it just seems a little incongruous to have two bays that would have the granite. And it, I think it provides more just visual consistency and uniformity to, to remove it in all of the base for that reason.
Could you go to the section that shows the, uh, the, the section through the bulkhead that shows the stair and all that stuff? Um, great. Um, so you have an access stair.
Yep.
Could you not go up through, uh, that instead of the front and walk on the roof of the bulkhead to get to that to the machinery instead of having it in the front?
Yeah, that's, that's something we explored. It's challenging because we have a mechanical equipment that we're trying to really squeeze in onto this roof and we're pretty tight on space. And putting the stair there was really challenging. We can't have a ladder to access the elevator machinery. We need a minimum of a sixty-degree stair or shift ladder, as they call it. So, um, we just, we were never able to make that work.
And, uh, and this configuration of building would not be suitable for a machineryless, uh, or remote machinery type elevator?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we, there is a machineryless traction elevator, um, you, because of the, we actually still need some, New York State City, sorry, still has some height requirements for a machineryless elevator. And it, it's pretty difficult, uh.
But you could get rid of that top eight or nine feet, couldn't you?
No. No, actually that's a thing, you wouldn't be able to, you would get it a little bit lower, but you actually would not be eliminating that much space because of, there's still some additional code required heights, height that you need.
So the reason, the reason that this bulkhead is large is because of the use of the roof for access for the community for building, right?
Right, which are currently, it's currently roofed. Yes, I guess that's one way to put it.
If it wasn't, if it wasn't used as an amenity of the building, you wouldn't?
Right, you wouldn't need to have access to the stair, right? Oh, sorry, you wouldn't need access to the roof.
Is this, is this core all new or you're leaving this core?
It's all, it's all new.
So why, could you, could you flip the elevator and stair and flip the elevator from the back?
If we could go to the plan, I think it just creates some challenges from a circulation standpoint, you go to the first floor plan, I mean, the, you, you're really.
Do you have a hallway there now?
We do. It's a service hallway to the back of house. It's basically, we're trying to provide accessibility back here. I mean, it's, it may be something we could explore, but it may score a pretty challenging just. To have the elevator back here, which we think is what most people are really going to use to get to, you know, the fifth floor of this building.
Okay, thank you. Could I ask, just continuing on the same issue, I know we can all with the bulkhead height. The machine room could be moved to the side on the roof, but then it would be not a traction, it would be.
The machine room, so a part of the machine room needs to be over the shaft of the elevator. Could it be so that this portion, which is where all the panels are, if that could be off to the side?
On the roof, I know it takes up, it takes up the roof, but it's the one with the bulkhead. But then it has to be a hydraulic elevator.
Well, it still has, right, for a traction elevator, it would still need to be at this height. You would just be potentially rotating it. For a hydraulic elevator, you really want it as close to the elevator pit as possible, otherwise you're pumping oil up to the, all the way up to the roof end. That doesn't really work very well.
And where's the floodplain?
The floodplain is a few feet above this height, so not quite this height, but right about. Thank you.
And I think, I was going to ask about the side slot elevator as well, because we've seen that as a solution, machinery on the side. We do know that after a superstorm Sandy, all of the building instances or district were flooded, and actually all of them mechanical equipment had to be moved out and need approved a number of applications to mechanical equipment that need to be approved. So I understand the challenges. Other questions? Let's take some testimony and come back to Brittany Thomas.
Brittany Thomas, Historic District Council. Crown floor load bearing granite pier construction is one of the oldest buildings in New York City, and this restoration and repair will allow this building to show its age in a beautiful way. Congressman, your recent articles in New York Times and Forbes, HGC enthusiastically supports the installation of solar panels on this landmark. In fact, HGC was not able to locate a public testimony where we did not support this environmental endeavor. Overall, the scope of work for this building is laudable, except for the enormous elevator bulkhead. HGC is convinced that there is enough solution for installing an elevator in this building without constructing a mass which is half as high as the building itself. HGC urges the commission to reduce this mass. The price of this elevator shall come at either the expense of the loss of some interior space whereby a mammoth protrusion can distort it. HGC much prefers that the elevator's machine room occupy the interior and preserve the small-scale character of this district. Thank you.
Thank you. For anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? And we do have a resolution from committee board one recommending that the commission approve the application. More questions, particularly on the elevator bulkhead? Okay, so that's my wish to close the hearing.
That's what I'm saying.
And favor. This is a historic district where historically and over time, there were bulkheads that were voiced, packed, utilitarian features. And the commission has used those in the basis approved of mechanical equipment as well as can houses and competition. So this elevator bulkhead is very of a tolerance. So we could further put down some of their challenges, but let's have a discussion about
Although, that building to the right on this slide is quite a well-known, famous in its day for addition and adaptive reuse, one might even say, of the historic district. I think the thing that's different is that it's highly articulated, and it's part of a, part of a whole, maybe a whole of the building, and it's a historic bottom, you know, contemporary top if you will. And, and in this case, because it's an elevator override, it's not articulated in that probably right move, but it makes it stand out in a different way than a check. The other issue that I think, kind of a question too, I think that that parking lot that we came at, well, it's already developed over time. So I guess we're not supposed to exactly think this way, but over time, this site will be developed and this view would not be possible at all. And when viewed from Water Street, I think some of those views may be, yeah, may the bulkhead from this view blend in with, you know, seeing the perspective of the taller additions to the south. So I'm sort of wanting that elevator bulkhead to get lowered if possible, but on the other hand, if it can't, I'm sort of edging toward saying, I think it could be a improvement.
Maybe some articulation?
Maybe, yeah, maybe something, right.
I agree with Fred. And I think every architectural firm in New York has been in a proposal for a building that will go in front of it, and nothing has happened. I am bothered by the removal of the water table, the granite water table where the two storefront windows are. I think that that's necessary, and it's, I think we should remove a little bit of the story about it.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't give up hope on lowering the stuff there. I think that if anybody switches to the back, even though it might be a little bit more of a corridor for those who use the elevator, I think it seems like it's feasible, and I think it should at least be explored. Doing so without taking the foot off the bulkhead would minimize visibility, it would, I think we've got a relationship with the museum next door. I also think that the, the cladding of the, of the stair with cement panels is the wrong way to go. There's lots of junk on these roofs. I don't think that, that the increase in mass is a good trade for the, for the noise that a stair would make. It would be a good thing, that kind of clutter and noise and articulation, I mean, getting what Fred's talking about. You know, you don't need, this isn't the upper side, I think having that kind of mechanical stuff showing would help scale a bit. But hopefully, if the elevator were moved to the back, which would mean the stair would go to the front, there might be other issues with mechanical things showing. And it's a landmark day, so to speak, because I think this is the first time we're seeing a project that owes the life sign here that is the result of this new code, which, well, I know, is how it acts of course, but I think it's great and made every man.
Okay, Michael, do you have a take in on the water table?
Either. Do you have a time slot?
I'm shocked that no one here wrote that. They stood in front, they didn't print it.
I agree on the, some articulation of the bulkhead, because I think it's the only way to make it, get it in a kind of fitting with the environment, which is, and I, you know, I have no idea whether they can move it. It sounds like it's, may not, may not make that much difference. And if it doesn't, then I would, you know, require them to try to, to do that, but I guess we could say if it's possible to lower it, obviously, that's always a good thing. But it's going to be pretty massive, I think, regardless. I, and, and on the water table, I agree. So the water table and articulation for sure.
Yeah, I agree with Michael. The room, though, we'll be able to climb, was my instinct as well, to see if they can reverse the stair in the elevator. Obviously, there are some challenges on the interior that might be worth looking at. And also, I agree that the heart of the objection is the monolithic quality of the addition of the bulkhead and breaking it down and leaving a lot of the stair to be articulated, just like the building next door has a lot of exterior railings and stairs, and just be more, look more appropriate in the street blocks and blocks.
And the water table? Keep the work.
I agree with the applicant, but first, just to keep in mind here, the law is not what's driving the visibility of either the solar panels or the elevator. It's the applicant's desire to have the rooftop space be accessible. So, you know, if you wanted to really make this more appropriate and more visible, that would be the solution of their choice, not the law that's there.
I think it's to maintain accessibility. I think we have a group of applications to work with the staff to reverse the plan of the stair elevator plan if possible, to articulate the furniture as well.
In the matter of the certificate of appropriateness for Manhattan, building C2004051, 24 Water Street, South Street Seaport Historic District, a group of office-style roofed office-style warehouse built in 1836, applications to match our storefront openings and extend an elevator bulkhead. Note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the South Street Seaport Historic District. Staff for the notes that many of the historic commercial structures within the historic district have historic rooftop acquisitions, including hoistways and jackways, that are visible over the primary facade, and that the commission has approved other physical rooftop additions throughout this historic district. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that this block of Water Street Ed Buildings with a variety of heights and widths, including some of them with substantial rooftop additions visible from multiple locations to the west. That the proposed elevator bulkhead and percolator with solar panels, which will be visible over the primary facade, will be seen in context with other large rooftop additions and buildings in this block. That the gray fiber voided cladding of the bulkhead and simple framing of the percolator will have a neutral appearance. That the removal of limited areas of granite at the building's base to allow for new upgrade entrances will provide for barrier-free access into the building. That the storefront infill, consisting of paneled wood bulkheads, display windows and transom window, and transom spring and break in wood, will be consistent with typical storefronts from elsewhere within the historic district. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the South Street Seaport Historic District. However, I find that the proposed elevator bulkhead and access stairs will be highly visible over the front facade of the building, including from close proximity to the building and from outer distances where the sky background is relatively open. And that the removal of the historic stone water table from all these storefronts, storefronts based is excessive. Therefore, I recommend that the visibility of the elevator bulkhead be reduced and that the staff explore with the applicant reversing the position of the bulkhead and stairs to reduce visibility. And that the historic stone waterfront, water table in front of the windows, storefront windows be retained, and that, that the further articulation of the bulkhead working with the applicant.
All favor? Any others?
The next item is number five. It's in 20-04501. Application for the particular appropriateness of Roman Hatton block 644, 246. 3 Ninth Avenue, 49 Ganseport Street, Mid-Morne Ganseport Street, against 101st Square District. A group of office-style rowhouse, built serving in 249, altered in 2007, and a staple building in 2007 and altered in 2008. Application is also beside and installed in solar infill.
Good morning, Commissioners, great to meet you. Presenting the staff. Application before use 3 Ninth Avenue, which is an altered rowhouse and former stable building located at the corner of Ganseport Street and Ninth Avenue in the Ganseport Market Historic District. The rowhouse building at the corner was reduced in width by one bay on the south end in 1887 when Ganseport Street was widened. In these photos, you can also see the original stable building on Ganseport Street, which was demolished pursuant to commission approval of 2005, which was a stable building. The existing condition photos are depicted in the photo on the upper left, you can see here. The two buildings are now connected internally as a single commercial space. In 2007, the commission approved demolition and construction of a metal-clad one-story building. And with this approval, the commission also required the installation of brick piers at the ground floor of the rowhouse, which you can see here. The new proposal is seen in this rendering and includes the installation of crude stone cladding, which will wrap the ground floor and both facades, as well as the installation of corrugated metal canopies containing bracket signs, and the installation of illuminated signant, signams at the ground floor here and at the second story of the rowhouse, former rowhouse building. Louis Morier is here to present and approve.
Hello, good morning. So basically, we were told that the existing building, this was a photo here to us from Landmarks, and as you see, the material at the corner of the building is wood, so historically, that was the fabric there, and it was all removed, as well as the stable building, as you just heard. So the case that I want to make today is that since all of that material that was historic was never brick to begin with, what we're, what had happened in 2008 was sort of a revisionist history, putting in brick on that low level on that corner and creating a facade that's kind of ugly, quite frankly, because it's disjointed architecturally, it doesn't have any cohesiveness. So what we're proposing is to make it a cohesive lower level that is separate from all of the historic material and respects that historic material, but creates a cohesive and I would say much more attractive architectural street level presence. And that's why we're here today, because obviously, there's. And that's why we're here today, because obviously, there was brick there, but it wasn't historical. So that's my main point that I want to discuss. And you've already heard that the material was Portland stone with a dark bronze frame with glass. And we have on the top, there it is, yeah. So at the top, there's a dark brass railing. We have signage here, here, and here. There was some little signage at the lower level there. And essentially, that's the product. At the corner, this is a rounded glass piece with an express column behind it for the support of the building. But again, my main point is that there was no historic material there that we had to respect, and we're proposing a more beautiful architecture, etc. That's basically it. I didn't want to go through the drawings, okay? I'm not sure I heard you. Sorry. Yeah, 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 okay. So the drawings you have in the front view. So essentially, what I just discussed is on this page, they're just showing some photo details of the existing... All right, so again, we have the, basically, signage here. As I discussed, this is all stone, the bronze.
The what looks like kind of a lot of leaves in the railing, what is that?
Yeah, that's... The idea is to incorporate some bone at some point.
That's planted.
Yeah. Using the...
We're... Norrie is going to partner up with the Highline Landscapes Company to provide correct foliage, vines, whatever.
Will you have to come up? Can you come up and state your name?
I'm running over here with the project manager for this project. And like I was saying, for the foliage, I don't know whether Norrie is going to partner up with the Highline Landscapes Company to get appropriate kind of vines and plants to be able to put in there so they survive through the winter and how we do the Highline sort of things. Also, an addition of this inside the building, I don't know who knows this building already or not, there's an inter-garden. And then Norrie, again, with the landmark, I mean, not landmark, with the Highline recommendations, they're going to be planting a tree inside this place. So they're going to have a white tree inside the store, which is going to be visible from the outside, just for the glass.
But it's well within the store.
It is within the store, exactly. It's way in the center of the store to the design.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
More renovations, lights out of view. Just some surrounding contextual photos, job warnings, and different streetscapes. There was one in particular that I wanted to point out that has a sign up on the building, Hermes. I know it's a different building, but there is precedent for a sign on the building. And we have all the details. Basically, just still with the dark brass, dark bronze frames.
Is there currently no wall between the corner building and the staple building?
Correct. They're open. It's one continuous space.
Green, it has been open since the prior, before the prior application.
There was a different tenant for the prior application and now a lower tenant.
But the space is already open and combined.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? I'll take testimony and then we'll come back to you. Brittany Thomas?
Brittany Thomas is Director of Shits Council. To begin, the signage proposed on the building's facade between the second and third stories should be removed entirely. Signage should remain at the ground floor pedestrian level. The brick piers of the row house currently meet the ground where they should remain, and they should not be erased by the storefront. In fact, they exist because the LPC requested the presence of more brick at the May 22nd, 2007 public hearing under storefront's last board commission. These are two separate structures, a row house and a staple. Preserving their legibility as individual structures is paramount. Urban idiosyncrasies such as the pair of buildings is crucial to the whimsy and surprise that characterize historic districts. Falsely unifying the two buildings with a wraparound treatment is inappropriate and new designs should be submitted for the ground floor. Finally, it is unclear how the staple was altered in such an unsympathetic manner at the designation, as HTC cannot locate a certificate of appropriateness for this intervention, which resulted in the loss of its residential cheap walls. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Delgoff?
Chris Delgoff for the Society for the Architecture of the City. It is saddening to watch the gradual destruction of this historic district, which having lost its former market character, is now using also its architectural form and its ancient place, where a pair of old bricks and stone replaced with smart water materials. Everything that once made people want to be in this area is being sedulously removed and replaced. This renovation of a renovation, unexpected from a distinguished Italian company, if you'd like to see here, would benefit from being, just what they're not trying to do, it would benefit from being less unified and fashionable as a design. The remains of the corner building, damaged as it is, should be allowed to retain a separate identity rather than being amalgamated into the showcase next door. The unusual use of narrow vertical stone panels would perhaps be more successful if it were less extensive and not used as facing on a building to which it is so alien. A second look, including that historic photos on an earlier date, could lead to a more site-specific design, which withdraw from the nostalgia for old New York that originally made Gansmore and Borman Town generally interesting as a location. And I'd like to add that there is an earlier photograph which your wife showed, which I was unable to locate in time to experience, which is after the elevator came in, but wow, that building is still looking incredibly lovely. And I think I'm not speaking up so much for the way the brick piers came out after the recent renovation, but bringing brick down and keeping... And this was after the street was wiped and put some else there. I really wish you would look at that, and if I can find it, I'll send it in.
Thank you. Lisa Mitchell?
Hello, Lisa Mitchell from Village Preservation. Although the Gansmore Market Historic District has seen some significant change since its designation in 2003, we feel that changes that bear no relation to the historic character of the district or the specific building should not be allowed. It is difficult to think of a historic district in which white-footed aggregate cladding would be appropriate, but it is certainly not the Gansmore Market Historic District. Additionally, the proposed bathroom signage is completely inappropriate. For these reasons, we urge the Commission to deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this application? We have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board to recommend a denial of the application as being whatever it's a part of the building of the district. Would you like to respond to some of the comments? I think in particular, the question about the legibility of the two separate buildings in the historic district.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I can understand the concern about protecting the character of the neighborhood, but when we're talking about a specific location that is not, that has changed so much over time and looks, quite frankly, awful, the attempt that we're trying to make here is to create something beautiful in the neighborhood. Whether or not that particular design complements the neighborhood, that's a subjective opinion. We can agree. But I think we can also agree that the disjointedness between the lower level is not doing the neighborhood any favors at all, secondly. It doesn't really work. I understand why the LPC wanted to put those bricks in to try to create something that wasn't there, to give it a character that wasn't there. And I can see an argument for that, I can. But I also can see an argument to make also a beautiful space on the ground level that is respectful of historic material and adds character to the neighborhood, because it's beautiful. We... That's the main point here. We're trying to create a beautiful presence on the ground floor respecting all the historic material. And as I've said, the historic material is gone. To put it back would be to build a staple and wood again, which is not really feasible.
Any other questions, Diana?
I did actually have a question originally, was about the signage. I believe there are two blade signs. There are two backlit proposed signs on the facade on each side. And there's a couple of signs. It also appears there's another sign which says "New storefront, long-term sign." They're just not here, is there? Because is that a small... Yeah, what's that? Is there something there?
Yeah, a small text.
Okay, okay.
That's just pin mounted.
Pin mounted.
So that's not illuminated or something like that?
I think so. Just wanted to clarify how much signage there is. Also, the building, the photo shown at designation was not the original building, obviously. Yeah, if you're talking about the original. It's true that there's not original fabric as far as I know on the lower level, but that doesn't mean that there wasn't originally an original brick building there, which I assume there was.
Right, so the street cut through the building.
Yeah.
Changed its shape, appearance, and it seems that there is an historic photograph that shows that even at that time, there was brick at the ground.
So we don't know what it was, but obviously, it would likely have been brick. So just to clarify that, thank you.
And they were historically two separate buildings. The Commission, in its own past actions, has wanted there to be a designation. Any other questions? All right. Let's unmute and close the hearing. On paper, discussion.
There are two projects that reveal the underlying idea of the district, one of these one does, we made it wrong. What we do here a lot is approve designs that hold on to the time when this was a place where carcasses were cut apart and played trucks, but where really they're selling $20,000 handbags. So this looks like a $20,000 handbag, and that's probably very appropriate to the contents. But if we're to maintain the fiction that we do, that there is value in recalling the time when it was re-carcasses and not handbags that were coming out of these spaces, then it seems like we might be well served to suppress this expression of that underlying economic truth. I think that what this does is it kind of... It's very... It's the difference between an aesthetic commission and a Landmarks Preservation Commission. It's aesthetically quite attractive, but it bears little to no relationship with the grungy makeshift, hand-assembled, crappy character of a building that existed in the past or a district writ larger. And so I think that while it's a perfectly lovely thing, if you could craft it at all, it's just going in the wrong direction. I also think there's too much signage.
And the elimination, related to that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it looks... It looks like a... You know, it isn't. It's a nice design, but it looks, the design looks separate from the building and as though it's just sort of pasted on there. But, you know, maybe might be taking off the canopy on one side and trying to make some separation without such an extreme, you know, some recall of the original additional building without, you know, destroying the sense that you're trying to get there. And the signage makes a problem, most particularly on the sign above, which I don't think has any precedent in this district, but additional signage. And, you know, they're going to have blade signs and signs on the building, which is like, this is... And on two sides, because they have to... And that's on two sides and on one side. So that's the general problem?
I mean, I just, I do want to compliment the architect. It's beautiful design. There's no question about it. It just doesn't belong here in this iteration. And, you know, part of it is, a lot of it is, I think, material reality. You know, it might be a little bit of a, the fiction in the district, but that is what we're living with, and I think we have been trying, as a commission, to retain the historic, the architectural and, you know, historic character. And this project unfortunately does not. And the sign above really speaks to a more normal, like, presence. It doesn't seem appropriate.
All right, for a minority plot, clearly a minority plot, but I'm going to run on to two things that have been said. It's a beautiful design. And second, there's something Diana said that suggests to me a way out of this design, but I'm not sure this design has much support, which is to break that one canopy. If you can look at the historic designation photo, you see two elements. The higher one is at the corner and the lower one, the mid-block, I guess you might call it. So I would think maybe the existing design, which may be such a minority position, it's not worth, we've been talking about much better. To me, if that could be done, and then maybe somehow some wood, some wood, it was wood, introduce some wood into this design in a way that would be code, is the issue, I guess, but also is softness somewhat. So I guess I'm trying to hang on to the design enough. The carcasses are gone, guys, and so, you know, let's move on from carcasses and accept what this is, which is, I think, a different kind of historic district, which we have historically been allowing a lot of experimentation with.
Well, just to... I mean, I don't think I was saying we should protect the reality of the bathwater. I think what I was saying was part of the problem here is this issue of materiality that doesn't quite work. Obviously, I don't think this is going to be a retail... Work. You know, we need windows, etc. We can't go back to where we were, it just doesn't work. And, you know, Fred's idea, that could be one that works, but I guess my feeling is it has to be restored. I'm not suggesting that we need to throw everything out to make it work, but it definitely doesn't fit as it is.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
We'll finish our discussion and then Correia will work.
Sure.
Yeah, I agree with some comments that have been made. I think that this is another example of sanitizing this district through the painter's standards, it's no longer in the attacking district, but it still has to add hock quality to it. And these attempts are to just try to homogenize things, I think, or let them go in the wrong direction. The corner building is a separate building from the initial building, and I think it needs to be that way. And I agree that the upper, the signage on the building base is not appropriate, but I'd like to see something, something that would matter. I'd like to see something, something that would matter.
So we, we're not going to take an action today, we're just having a discussion on our paper, and I think that it's, you know, when we designated this, sometimes we designate historic districts to be very cohesive and packed, but this historic district is designated in some ways because of the alterations that happened to the buildings. It recognized the various uses that resulted in the construction. So the picture of character is really defined by this kind of ad hoc evidence of change that had at that time. And so I think that what the inherent elements are, that something that is so uniform and beautiful doesn't necessarily reflect that ad hoc quality that is, that was the designation's trying to capture. In addition, the two distinct buildings should have some legibility, even though they were combined earlier on the interior. And I think there are ways that you can still design a store that has a single identity that occupies two buildings, which can be either two separate buildings. And I think that would be consistent with the kind of changes that happen in certain buildings up and down. So you can work with Corina and make some suggestions, mostly back on the paper.
The next item is number six, LBC 19-28568, an application for certificate of appropriateness in Borough of Manhattan, block five, ninety block six, in Martin, nineteen Barrow Street, the Greenwich Village historic district. My row house is originally built in 1834 in the metal style and altered in 1975 as carvings. The application is to construct a rooftop.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Elizabeth Hagan, Preservation Staff. This item is nineteen Barrow Street, located on the south side of Barrow Street, between Leaker and West Fourth Streets in the Greenwich Village historic district. The application is to construct rooftop edition deck and extend the distinction of chimney flues. The Commissioners are reviewing this application today due to visibility of the addition over the side facade from Barrow Street, as well as visibility over Barrow Street facade from locations to the north, including the intersection of Seventh Avenue South and Christopher Streets. Originally nineteen and twenty-one Barrow Streets were constructed as separate warehouses and raised to their current height in nineteen twenty-five and combined. The proposal includes extending the existing roof by sloping it up towards the rear facade, and the roof will be clad in a standing suddametal wood skylights. Here you can see the existing roof plan and photos of the current conditions, including four existing chimneys. Also note that the two buildings have different roof heights, which you can see a little bit up here. The proposed extension will serve as the apartment on the fourth floor at the front of the building, shown here in the plan, and a new stair bulkhead will provide access to a roof deck at the back of the building. Now here are some existing sections through the fourth floor and photographs showing the existing conditions, especially ceiling heights. And at the rear facade, the proposal includes raising the parapet and installing railings. Also shown here is the proposed rear facade of the addition to be clad in brick. The new rear facade of the building is not visible from public thoroughfares. Here is the existing side elevation and the proposed side elevation showing the sloped roof extension, which is to be clad in brick. And also note that the side of the extension is visible from Barrow Street. And note that the metal chimney flues you see in this photo are existing and are part of the proposal. The extension will be visible to the east from Barrow Street, as well as to the north along Seventh Avenue South. The proposed addition is not visible directly across Barrow Street. It's visible here to the east of Barrow Street. It's not visible as you go to the west along Barrow Street, continuing, and then here is to the north looking south from the intersection of Seventh Avenue South and Christopher Streets, where you can see the proposed roof addition, as well as right here, there's also a chimney in the center of the roof that will need to be extended. The applicants are here to further discuss and to answer any questions.
Hello, everyone. My name is Victor Guero, I represent the Living Forests Architecture Designers Project. The really intent of this project is basically to add quality of life to the individuals who present in the front apartment. The roof, as you can see from the photographs, is really low, and that's what really basically the intent, intent here with this proposal, just to raise the roof, provide quality of life for that apartment. Any questions?
Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? Please come to the podium and state your name.
My name is Donald Knight, I live at nineteen Barrow Street. There's just one thing I want to point out about the application is the stated purpose is that the existing ceilings are really low. I lived in apartment four C for over 20 years until March of 2015, and the ceiling when I lived there was nine feet throughout, so there really is no reason that it has to be raised at all. I mean, other than that, I agree with the Community Board, the recommendation to deny.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? As we stated, the Community Board, too, has recommended denial of the application as being an oversized rooftop addition, and this design is not compatible with this historic district. Do you want to speak to the design and what you see and how you see it in relation to the building?
What we're proposing is totally within the context of the day. Right? These precedents that we took from the Minneapolis historic district, and take a look, this is within a two-block radius. We're, again, what we're proposing is totally not out of context. These two properties have, you know, the characteristics of what we intend, what we're proposing in our context. And these two are the precedents, there's twenty-seven Grove, which is right at the corner, again, falls within the characteristics of what we are proposing. So again, it's nothing extraordinary that's being proposed here, it's just, again, the reason of the roof is for quality of life purposes. And also, again, bringing it into compliance with the building, I mean, the height from the photograph, and also, you know, size business, through that, that particular apartment is extremely low.
Could you confirm what testimony suggested that nine feet exists throughout the apartment?
So there is, this area is what the individual's speaking about, okay? This area or this apartment, they will combine at some point, okay? This is the area where it is the low ceiling. The roof that we, um... Okay, so we're not touching this area, the roof line remains the same. We're just intending to, from this point, to just reconstruct the roof without altering the roof line that, that is actually on the higher of the, of the ceiling.
Right now, do you still straight across to that, at that canopy, at eight feet eleven inches, what you call it, huh?
The proposal, yes.
The one side is currently at eight feet eleven, and the middle is lower, and then the both are eight feet eleven. And then the smaller floor.
That doesn't affect me, I don't know.
And then can you go to the slide that shows the view from Barrow Street in the upper side? The interior on the side is?
Brick. Yes, we're proposing to extend the brick all the way up, so when you look from that view, you will see brick, and that brick will match the existing characteristics of the brick that's there.
And then the top is glass.
I'm sorry?
And the top is glass. And then the glass is on the roof.
That's correct, yes.
So it's all fully sealed brick.
Brick and, from this point, yes.
Okay, this is a historic district where there were studio windows and skylights. Did you think about creating it like a skylight in its appearance, that level of glass?
I'm sorry?
So that view, did you think about a different material to reference the skylights that was originally found in this district?
We did look at some of them, the doma, for example, there's a doma-type window on the existing building that we, you know, that we considered. But again, you know, the owner wanted us to propose, and she liked the concept of having this particular skylight, so... We wanted to go with something similar to this.
Is there a question?
I'm sorry, I just have two questions. So on page nineteen, it's a little confusing. So it's where it says living room. So that, am I, I can't see. So this, so that, that's this ten-four ceiling height there?
Right, so on the back of the building, okay, has a much higher ceiling, because there are steps that leads up to the front apartment. So the front apartment, you know, you go all these steps, which essentially makes it lower, but on the back, ceiling's really high.
Okay, so it's raising the ceiling of the front rooms, but also allowing access onto the roof.
Correct, yes.
So that's why eight foot, seven foot seven, you're arguing.
Okay.
So it's the beams and that, it's tall, it's tall, but the beams are not that big. And so most of the views, you're sort of seeing it disassociated from the building, but the one view that we were just on, is that the main view where you see a connection to the building? So what we're seeing there is, and that's a ceiling photo, right? That's a ceiling photo, it's the previous photo, I wonder what we have. Yeah, there we go. So that's, that's sort of most visibility where you're seeing.
That's it?
Yeah.
From a distance, you see the roof, but there's a few shots where you see the roof from a distance.
Yes.
More direct.
Right, but you can't really see what the roof is on.
Just kidding.
On page thirty-nine, one. Actually, I think this is a business project. We should, are we ready for discussion? So let's have a motion close in here.
Close.
On paper. There's a book on a lot of places, I think most of the reviews are disassociated from the connective, and so, you know, I mostly have a focus on that view from Barrow Street, where I think it's not very huge or very visible, but it is visible, I think, if you think about sort of how it terminates, maybe if it can be reduced, what is going to approve access to the roof, what to think about the materials and the design and how it terminates, so, yeah.
I just want to clarify one thing, if we could go to sheet seventeen, it's a little easier to see it, that mockup, it seems to be leaving out, you know, a few bits and pieces of this, and just to clarify, there's a wood fence that you're seeing there that is on the property, and according to the plans, elevations would become brick, so it's a little more complicated than just that piece sticking up above it. So if you look at that section or a circle, you can see, you'll see more brickwork than that, it'll sort of fill in that hole a bit more.
Okay, so it's the, the wood will be replaced with brick, and as proposed, the triangle of the roof will be crossed over. And then the, these ones will be managed as well. So thoughts?
Well, I, it's not completely clear how this will terminate in this view, but it seems that there are enough upper rooftop elements around it that will help blend in. What seems to be jawing in this view, and I'm not really sure exactly, is the, the rather, which is a sharp point, so perhaps they could, they could champer the top, but they could go lower the very top of it, so it's not such an extreme peak.
And then I think it might actually leave like a whole kind of one top of it outside of all, and then maybe pretty consistent. People agree with that? Okay, so we'll do approval of applications to champer it.
Would be consistent with the evolution of these buildings, the proposed vision will not be visible and be directly from Barrow Street, and on the chimney fluse, and portions of the extended area inside facade, it is eventually visible in the secondary, in the south of Barrow Street, although the closure of that addition will result in various changes to the buildings, mostly to be incidental and not visible in conjunction by primary facade, limiting the addition of building and streetscape to be bonded to the additions of a simple medicine, but will not call attention to itself in the same conjunction. Other neighboring, blueprints of the appropriations, that the standards in that apply would be keeping, would be keeping to the average of the roofs, the compositions, that the district, that the extension will set back some rear facade along historic mass of the buildings, to be seen to be retained, and with the symbol punched out, using separate finish of the roof, so they maintain the residential character of these buildings, that the raised rear, this career and side brackets will be constructed in brick, closely matched to the size and retain the public building of the rear. They have retained the security of the operations to the facade along the, the, the effect, and the work will not detract from the special structural character of the Greenwich Village historic district, or the act of work and staff to modify the profile of the peak of the roof as it is listed from Barrow Street.
Second, on paper?
Yeah.
Any others? I sort of agree with that one application. So we'll break for lunch and we'll come back at one o'clock.
Everybody, we're going to start, we have a meeting session, the item number seven, LBC one nine dash three nine seven oh eight, an application for certificate of appropriateness in Borough of Manhattan, block fourteen oh four, lot one three seven, one sixty seventy Street, the Upper East Side historic district. The row house originally designed in Italian style by the Mactarán, built in eighteen seventy, seventy-four, redesigned in the P A classic style, owned by Wallace and Gray in nineteen forty-five, altered by Thomas Rich in nineteen forty-sixty-four. The application is to redesign the top side and alter the rear.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Michelle Shablan, Preservation Staff. The application, the volume is one sixty seventy eighth street, which is located between Third Avenue and Lexington Avenue in the Upper East Side historic district. The building was built in the eighteen seventies and then altered in nineteen twenty and then again in the nineteen sixties. This work includes redesigning the primary facade and the area wave, altering the area wave. This work includes redesigning the primary facade and the areaway, altering the areaway. At the primary facade, the applicant is proposing to remove the cornice and the entrance surround, cutting back the underlying stucco and plating up the south面的石块 with limestone. The new facade will feature limestone cornice, granite curbs, wood windows and doors, and secure trails. At the areaway, the applicant is proposing to expand the areaway, expanding with the new section, the depth to match existing and replacing the existing fence and complicating with bluestone favors, steps with bluestone treads, planters, attractive septacles, and also a stucco that would incur. The architect, Alan Berman of Architech, is here to discuss the proposal.
So, review again, or are there any questions first, or I can go through the again?
Well, why don't you, I think this is, why don't you start and how this building is described in the designation report? And then talk about the new design and how the neighborhood report.
Terrific. So the existing building was a row of four Italian made brownstones. One to the right of it was five of them in stucco in eighteen seventy-one. The one to the left of us was restored by, sorry, Mr. Peter Neuer. We, what we have left on our building, the twenty's, is pretty much stripped of all of its Italian made details. There are some neoclassical details, the left is the bell courses, a stucco entry for it all. Again, you see three of the four townhouses, all, all different right now. See, we had, in the twenties, they also added some blind archways, which don't really match anything else on the street. They're not really historical unless you, you know, in nineteen twenty-one, renovation is historical. You see different buildings along both sides of the street, different styles, some are stucco, some are brownstone, some are limestone. Again, there's our entryway. And then we have, again, the entryway. Showing you the actual materials that are there. It's a mixture of brick, cement, and painted stucco. No original brownstone on the actual building. It is, it's covered up, but we didn't see it. This is the building next door that was remodeled in nineteen seventy-one and to a very star modern white stucco. To the left is the existing elevation, to the right is new elevation in the neoclassical style. We're basically suggesting to put back a lot of the Italianate or neoclassical, depending on how we define that today. Put back a lot of the detail that was, that has been taken away, re-centering the ground for the door, widening and expanding the areaway. It could be of a thick limestone, two and a half, three inches. I know there was a question from the commission, this was approved, but the, and it turned out to be so expensive within order. I want to come back and ask to change the approval. And I can assure you that they're full speed ahead going into this and hoping very much that we can make this work. In color, to the left is the existing, to the right, you're not seeing the blocks, the lines between the blocks, but the last drawing.
On the second floor, do you want me to just address that?
Yeah, so we see that as now, on the panel, to make that floor more important than the floors above. And the detail's wider and more apparent. And as we step up to the higher floors, we receive and have a little bit less detail by the time we get back to the top windows. There is no cornice whatsoever above the window. However, we had had a, we're trying to replace at least sort of a massing of an appropriate cornice at the top. Which, we had just a cornice and a bell course below. We added the recess revealed below that to sort of tie the three together to give sort of the same scale of the nice door at one sixty-two. We have precedents from around the neighborhood. Can you help me read the addresses from over there? My accident. So these are some entries in the neighborhood, showing the central entry in limestone. Can you read the addresses from forty-seven here? Forty-seventh third is the top one? One twenty-seventh east seventy-first. And eleven sixty-nine, with very similar entryways as were proposed. There's the areaway that we are suggesting comes at an additional three feet, two inches to match the areaway of the townhouse to the east of us in line. There's the existing door, which is on street level now. We're suggesting bringing it down to the level of the areaway, therefore giving it space between the door and the Pananopele and the decorative drills on the Pananopele. These are other, uh, examples of similar designs in the neighborhood. Stephen, if you could read the addresses.
Forty-seventh here?
Forty-seventh third here? One twenty-seventh east seventy-first, on the right. And then we have another example on the next page of an entire building, not too dissimilar from a local building. And this is, oh, she has dedicated to this, it's twelve seventy-six, which was also brownstone and turned into a limestone building. You can see it all the way to the left, the original building as it was built in eighteen seventy. So many examples in the neighborhood where this has been done. We just feel that the current building is really devoid of any architectural style, except for a few bell courses lapped on and stucco that is not brownstone. And we are hoping, what for you?
Any questions? So it's, it looks like the earlier, in the earlier photo, that the, that the windows were multi-painted? And I'm just wondering why?
We're not, yeah, we're not sure why they went multi-painted. We're suggesting to go back to original double on the street. So I'm not sure if we suggested multi-painting.
No, you're not suggesting. But what I'm seeing, but I think what I'm seeing is that the original style. So, well, just that, I think applicant, who was placed in two periods. The buildings were, it's very typical in this historic district, where the buildings were originally built. Were built as on the deal brand or other, and brownstone, rowhouses with scoops. And in the early decades of the twentieth century, many has became more of a wealthier neighborhood. More, many of the houses were converted with a new neoclassical design. And sometimes that meant creating a whole new facade that removed the stupid brick, and the new facade was built with the property line and the show. Sometimes it meant just stripping the rowhouses and adding classical detail. So I think if you look at the first tax photo, what you see is that the two houses were similarly stripped and given the classical style details, including the light windows, which, so the nineteenth century brownstone likely has one or more windows. Coming in nineteen twenties, it would have had ultimately to go with a classical style redo. And then, since then, that nineteen twenties redo has been stripped and altered itself. So the proposal is to do a new limestone facade, which is not what happened at this building, but did happen in other buildings.
So those hopefully light windows would have dated to that. Here, you're treating us a curious.
Are there other questions? Let's take testimony and we'll come back to you. Kathy Dana?
I represent myself at one fifty eighth seventh, and my neighbor, Jay Harden Rose, who's at one fifty fifth, he's seventh street, across the street. And he's resided there for sixty-one years. And our main objection is the areaway and extending into the sidewalk past the property line. Because it's a very, very busy street. It's an ambulance ramp, they've added a bike lane, there's foot traffic all day long from the subway to all the hospitals. And we have two schools. And the school next door to me draws from a very, very broad geographic area. And all of the girls take private buses back and forth. And there are twelve buses in the morning and twelve buses in the afternoon. So there's really not enough space on the sidewalk to accommodate this encroachment. And the opposite side of the street is predominantly carriage houses, so the sidewalk is much narrower than ours. So pushing out that far beyond the property line would really disrupt the flow because it's, it's a very, very busy street. And furthermore, right now, we have four houses, two have the original scoops or representation of the original scoops. And two of us are lined up with that. So adding this areaway would sort of add a third element in the context of the space, which is probably not appropriate. And then if, I would just like to request that if the current proposal is not accepted and they want to revise it, that it would be reviewed at a public meeting and not just at a stamp.
Felicia Mayr?
Hi, Felicia Mayr. On behalf of President of the Upper East Side Historic District, Chair Carroll and all commissioners, when the applicant, he first came to the other commission in twenty eighteen, friends would add the fact that the application was not being presented in its entirety. We felt that the piecemeal approach didn't properly represent the human impact of what is in fact one large alteration to the protected building. The design presented here today only reinforces our concerns. Friends Preservation Committee recognized the aesthetic improvement of the design proposed by the applicant. However, we cannot support this application. This townhouse was originally built part of a row of four brownstones nestled between two institutional limestone structures. At the time of designation, one of the original four houses had already been raised in stucco. The use of limestone proposed by the applicant would not only be incompatible with the original townmaker's style, but also would further disfigure the row's uniformity. Proposed windows and metal balustrade are again in cover of the original style of the structure. And the living internally, internally, the recessed wind arches are a result of the nineteen twenty-fifth alterations final frame, intended to create a simpler and more streamlined facade. As it stands with the proposed design, it's a hedge for other styles with the elements that disrespect the building's original style, fabric, and its early twentieth century alterations. Finally, friends to issue with the fact that community property has not seen the proposed, the proposal as it stands. We believe that the design here proposed is significantly different from the one presented to CBA's Landmarks Committee in July of twenty nineteen. Thus required a third round of review by the committee. We urge the commission to disprove the application and the architect to come back to the committee as part of our hearing. Proposal that respects the neighborhood context and the building's original characteristics and alterations.
Thank you. Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. As we've heard, one sixty east seventh was constructed as a part of four. Two survive, one sixty-two and one sixty-four have their original brownstone facades attached. A restorative approach to this project could easily study and update the conditions of those two buildings and recreate with a historic appearance. It's possible that the new owner wants to create a custom facade and not follow the past, but reinvent this house anew. If that route is ultimately approved by LPC as the appropriate approach, there are some issues with the proposed design. First issue is the proposed materiality of limestone. Limestone arrived late on the scene in terms of rowhouse facades, so its presence here appears as a... Rowhouses from the eighteen seventies, this one are typically characterized by brownstone. Other limestone structures are on this block, but they are grander institutional buildings that date from the early twentieth century. The second issue is the proposed ornament for the house. Using the neighborhood houses as a guide, it becomes apparent that the proposed ornament for this house is overscale. The lintel splay especially should be reduced. And LPC staff should closely examine the proportions of all of this ornament should this creation move forward. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? We do have a resolution from committee board date, July twenty nineteen, recommending disapproval of the application. Do you want to talk to the comments?
Sure. We actually had two committee board presentations. In the first committee board presentation, they actually loved our design and they had one problem, which was the amount of light. They felt that the double hung would be arching, not the double hung, but they wanted more lights in there. And as far as the architectural and neoclassical design, they actually quite in favor with it. Till one member said she wouldn't approve it because of the lights, and therefore they moved to disapproval. We went back to them with a slightly modified version, but really not that different than the first time. And the nine to one became, I guess, six to four. Nothing really had changed except for the window lights that they had asked us for. So when this was remodeled in the twenties, basically the style that we're proposing is also a style that was quite appropriate in the twenties. As you can see from many of the precedents that we've sent to you, it has been done. Between the skylight on top, if you call it that, but with the artist's window and really the line arches, there's really not much architecture to what is there now. We have the two beautiful brownstones to the right of us. Unfortunately, we have the white one to the left of us that is really quote-unquote modernized. And I don't think we're trying to be reminiscent of what was. It's an anomaly, it's by itself. And we think the line still is quite appropriate and is everywhere in this neighborhood in the same time period.
Doctor Diana, do you have a question?
Uh, yes, just do you want to respond on the areaway as well, the issue about, you know, it's, the airways too.
The areaway? Yeah, we'd definitely be able, we'd definitely be open to pulling the areaway back. The client has some handicap issues. Weight is right now is a little bit tight. We're asking for three foot, two feet, maybe if we got half of that, it would at least take away the stairway from the front door. So maybe there's a compromise somewhere in the middle.
But in terms of incorporate this, then I think the question is, is if they match the areaway on one side, that would be the original depth of the areaway. Or they, if they match areaway on the other side, that's sort of the nineteen twenties. Yeah, there, something in between, just something else.
I just wanted to hear the response on this question.
Other questions? Okay, that's a motion to close in here.
Sure, sure.
Do you know, as I said before, that this particular district is characterized by many nineteenth century rowhouses. They were altered in the nineteenth century. And the commission has treated that period as a significant layer. And in some cases where rowhouses are given the style, the style, no style. The certain commission has approved new limestone facades that are sort of in keeping with the nineteen twenties limestone facades or added to any of the nineteenth century houses. In this particular case, the designation report recognizes the alteration. So it recognizes that there was a nineteen twenties redesign. And then also recognizes that only some of those elements remain in this building, so altered since then. So the first question is, you know, should one do a design? Or should one look to the nineteen twenties, or even reverse in the nineteen twenties to the nineteenth century as a state see? But then if deciding that it's so altered and doesn't really like to bear those errors and can't be improved, does the new design, is new design incorporated in terms of its materiality and design details? So, yeah, would you like to start? So, yeah, would you like to start?
Why are you looking around?
When I look at this project, what I see is from kind of the camera way up, I see
a kind of limestone version of the Victorian building. Of course, surrounds, of course, the windows are actually very reminiscent of the building in the 20s, the left. And they're not reminiscent, in my limited knowledge, of the kind of the old classical language that is seen in the district, which is much more pared back, much more minimal up, minimal, or, you know, much more out and out of the road. But the, clearly, the building as it was renovated in the 20s was going for that more Georgian-ish, flat, strict look. Now, I don't think that they need to be held to that per se, but I do think that in the streetscape, this building with its neighbor, I believe there's one to the left of that that are, that are, that was also brownstone, or brown in color. It retained the remnant of the row in its general expression and I think was worth considering. So for me, you know, the building's kind of got this kind of Upper East Side style to it, which is lots of moldings, had to, had to kind of historically specific, comforting enough to put, you know, record-actually furniture. I think that, I think that, you know, it's, it's kind of, you know, not particularly, you know, is that okay or not okay? I'm not sure. But I think that it's kind of a little muddle for me. I think that at the very least, it should be brown. Because I think that the maintenance of the identity of a row is worth considering, that, which was even done in the 20s. You know, the continuity of the three buildings, now one of which is quite contemporary, was preserved, which wasn't always done in the 20s. So I think that that's something we should always consider. In terms of the detailing, I think you gotta kind of get on one horse and ride it.
I think, Michael, you, as I was on the head, but it is a mixed message and I think rather than getting into any of the details or proportions, et cetera, I would just say it's a brownstone house. All the details are brownstone. We've got Peter Pernori doing the one to the left, give you the example. I just think it should be brown, it should be a brown, it's not a proper brownstone or whatever. It shouldn't be a limestone, this is a limestone. That's where I am, basically. And with regard to the overall, I mean, these houses are all really decided, Upper East Side, and we've gone so many changes related to fashion that I think, you know, something improper of sorts about doing this. It also wouldn't have been out of sorts if some, if you wanted to do something almost like the one to the right. Anyway, this is what they've chosen and I think it's okay with me as long as it's brownstone and not limestone.
Well, I mean, I just want to say I agree. But I feel like when you look above the farther floor, there's some kind of cohesion and it does relate to the building on the left and then a certain side below there, I'm wondering what happens and I, there's something terribly wrong with it, but I do think it's a partner on the left is one that I would have been happy if it was up there to that. And if everyone thinks brownstone is the government, I'm going to, and I do feel like we should address that areaway issue.
So, so far what I'm hearing is that the facade is so altered that the 1920s design can be reconsidered at this point and the redesign is acceptable, but that the design chosen lends itself to brownstone. Other thoughts? So I think, I agree, I, you know, it's, some of these buildings have got entirely new designs and I think they were limestone, very good arts and painting and for some of those would actually have to be very sparse in detail and kind of restrained. And then some of them were just kind of all in the lower floors. So historically, there was some times evidence of the 19th century appearance of the upper floors or something else did happen to the lower floors, but I think if you are going for a new design and a new material, then you have to pick one or the other. It's confusing, it's not historic type or exists and because it is so consistent next to other, the other ones in this row that have the 19th century facade, I think we're able to do this. So I think we're all open to redesigning it and I think if we thought of this design as, I would maintain it as brownstone in relation to the row as it did even in the 1920s. I think if they wanted to pursue something more of those arts, we'd be all be looking through that, looking at something limestone. Okay, and then the areaway, I think we need some more information next time we come back to evaluate the areaway in the context of the streetscape.
Just to be clear about the areaway though, we appreciate the concern about the overcrowding, but that's not something we can just sit on. That's a DOP issue and not ours, right?
That's not ours.
Right. So here, the question is going to be, well, even as is the applicant, you know, suggested a compromise or allow it to go all the way out to the larger room online.
I think that also ties into what they should do with the sun. If you're gonna go with closed arts, you know, version, then a shorter areaway might be more appropriate, but if you're gonna go with the brownstone 19th century job, then it should probably match.
That's right. Okay, so we will know what you're closing hearing today. I just wish I would work with you and I know you have some questions, so she'll talk to you about it.
So we're gonna move to item number eight, this is LPC 20 dash 04576. An application for certain and appropriate this number of Queens, 826, 119 Road, Street and Dublin Street. Contemporary style freestanding house, both serve the 1970s. The application is to modify the interior of the closed fire in the building.
119 Road, which is located on the north side of Road and Street between West Drive and Center Drive and the Jefferson Historic District. House was constructed circa 1970 and is now a house which has been historically designated. The proposal is to modify the house to feature arts and crafts and craftsman style improvements by construction forward porch, in margin increasing of replacement accordance and changing the stock climbing materials on one other facet. The art section is at the end of the structure.
Yeah, I've heard your concerns. So this house was built in 1969. The, that's the main facade facing the street, this is the rear, it has a deck. West side, the east side, there are very few windows on the side elevations. This is the driveway side, from a different angle. The street itself, it's a fourhouse wide to the left, you can see it's a very eclectic block. This house is right sort of in the middle and to the right is a four-square, the other two overtly colonial revival. On the other side, to the left, is an arts and crafts style house, very muscular, and two 60s houses that were built on the end of that house. So the challenge here was to mesh this house into the landscape. The owners owned this for about three years and they wanted to blend in with the neighborhood and see how they could do that. So the challenge was, how do you break down the box? And one of the ways is with materials and with the front porch, we had enough room to get a covered porch in the front. And so the materials are a mix of traditional and more contemporary materials. Their upper part of that house is secret gentle stain, the lower part is real three-coat stucco, the Tuscan columns at the front are firewood half-smooth and the trim materials are composite, painted, everything is painted, the windows are marvin, aluminum clad. So this is the proposal, this is a color scheme that's in progress, but this is the direction we're going in, again, earthy colors, rooted to the landscape. There were also some braid chains we did at the front. The lot slopes a couple of feet from front to back, but the house sticks way up out of the ground. So one of the challenges was how can we make the house mesh better into the landscape? So at the front of the house, there are some lime retaining walls here and here so that at least across the front of the porch, we could get a clear view of elevation. So that's kind of what it looks like. Roof is the existing roof, which is asphalt shingling. We're not changing that. That was also one of the great challenges, is this very shallow-sloping roof. So maybe we can support it and also... Good. So looking for inspirations for this, Dublin Street has a lot of arts and crafts style where arts and crafts-inspired houses, including three Stickleley houses. And a lot of them have these somewhat exaggerated columns, sometimes in stucco, sometimes in wood. And this is kind of the material basis for 119 Road, the shingle and the stucco approach. Another house on Hollywood nearby and this is a house on Shore Road with stucco and shingles. This is actually a house behind 119 Road with the big fat columns, also stucco and shingle. Another one, this is all stucco but big columns, and so house on Shore Road. Most directly my inspiration for this is house number 70 from Stickleley's Craftsman magazine and it has this similar shallow pitch roof, different setup at the front and has a porch on the side instead of the front. And this house was actually built in Dublin Street on Arleigh Road, it's right around the corner and it's been modified slightly. And there it is. Questions?
Yeah, I might ask about the windows on the front because this, positioning of those two old windows in the front, seems a little bit odd. I mean, the other arts and crafts can seem like a tripartite feature.
Yes, try as I might. The one on the right is the bathroom and the one on the left is a walk-in closet. And we're actually not doing any renovations to the interior. It's completely an exterior project with the exception of we're blowing the windows and whatever work has to happen there. We also are moving the front door to the center of the composition. So there's just minor turn arc and stuff inside.
Does it see a way to make it look from the outside of the...
I really try.
Balance.
Yes, I agree with you. It's one of the things that is really difficult.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, let's take a guess one. Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll Historic District Council. The architect of this project, Kevin Wolf, is on HBC's Board of Directors and Advisors. HBC's help review committee reviewed this project and proposed testimony independent from the discussion of Mr. Wolf. So in the past, HBC has not supported stylistic changes of buildings in historic districts. However, HBC found the proposed change of this 1969 building appropriate in this case because it better relates to the context of Grosvenor Street and also to the greater architectural vocabulary of the Dublin Street Historic District. The introduction of a front porch and windows makes this house a more welcoming presence on the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? We do have a resolution from Queens Community Board, 11 recommend making approval of the application. Any final questions? Motion to closing hearing, one second. Okay, so a facade that is a little atypical, we're starting with the localities district and the application is to use to, to the craftsman style, to the district, sort of given, stuck with certain set of proportions that currently exist, but I think in many ways it's pretty successful.
I am extremely reluctant to midthink of this project. There is such a huge difference between what that was looks like now and what it's going to, you know, I realize that we did ask for a little this or a little that, but I think that it's such a wonderful idea and I appreciate it. There's actually an owner out there who wants to undertake to bring this house to equal harmony with the community.
Very well spoken, I think. Ironically, I think I would take the HBC position often, but not in this case. I think the 69 house is egregious in this context and I think the owner should be congratulated on taking such a big, and the architect as well. I had the pleasure of visiting the Stickleley house out in New Jersey, the Morris Point in the Bay of York. It was working, going, my goodness, quite a wonderful place. It's filled with Stickleley furniture, that house itself is fantastic. It's not even an hour from here, it's really amazing. Thank you.
So we have to say goodbye to the sisters in Savannah?
Just back, sister.
Can't happen soon enough.
I said to Michael, the way you see this one, you'll understand. I think the architect's done a really, a very good job of doing the best he could with the situation to try to bring this house into a situation where it is more appropriate for the district and it was very inappropriate in the, it's previous incarnation, so I can, I can settle this.
Great, so I think we have a process to approve.
In matter of 119 Grosvenor Street, the Duba Center Historic District, an application of modifying the space in place, designing and reconstructing, or if I recommend approval, finding that the redesign of the existing house, which is not one for which the historic district was designated, will not eliminate any significant architectural features of the house in sight. The proposed arts and crafts style-inspired redesign will be in keeping with the character of the historic district, which features numerous arts and crafts style houses. But the modest variations in overall simplicity of the composition found in the pattern of the window and door openings, the penetrations of the infill and the two facade cladding materials will recall the typical handmade and informal character of arts and crafts style houses. But assuming sightings, substantial frame porch and extended ease will be in keeping with the character and defining features of the arts and crafts style thereby supporting the unity of the overall design. The placement and size of the original door openings used with two different cladding materials of inclusion, full wood porch, would emphasize the artisanality of the house up in to keep the existing massing of the house to relate well to the proposed design. up in to keep the existing massing of the house to relate well to the proposed design. But the materials and finishes of the proposed dark brown painted wooden beige tone stucco cladding, white and blue painted wooden windows and doors and blue stone porch openings are in keeping with materials and finishes typically found throughout the historic district and compatible with the design of the house. And that the limited use of painted fiberglass and porch columns, which are set back from the street, will be the street presence, which will not draw undue attention to the columns or detract from any significant historic architectural features that there's certainly streets here.
Second. May I oppose? That's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move to the last items of the day. It's two items that we need to address from the city proposal. It's 4500 Arthur Kill Road, a certain house, individual landmark. It's like seven, 465, lot 113, 99, LPC 19-14497, application is taken appropriately. This is stick style residential, designed by Polister, Polister, both in certain, in certain areas. The application is with some barrier free access lift, construction building situated on the landmark site. And LPC 20-0196, an application for modification of use and bulk. This is an application request that the LPC issue a report to the city planning commission relating to an application for modification of use pursuant to section 74711, city resolution.
The afternoon commissioners, which rely on preservation staff. These items are for 4500 Arthur Kill Road in southwest Staten Island, just north of the area crossing on the east side of Arthur Kill Road. The site comprises two lots, one of which contains an individual landmark, the Kreischer House. This site historically had two matching, two matching semi-houses, one of which has since been demolished into three small ancillary structures, which has since been or will be demolished as part of its proposal. The first proposal is to add a request that the landmarks commission issue a report to the city planning commission relating to an application for modification of use from a manufacturing residential. A modification of use was previously supported by the commission in 2002. The change of use is never completed. Proposal for restorative work at the Kreischer House and restricted decoration during the second five-year maintenance agreement has been submitted in support of the area. The second proposal is a construction of 11 attached multi-story residential buildings comprising 48 units, five of which are situated on the landmark site, two of which likely encroach on the landmark site. In that area, you see the previous approval, approved by the commission for a single multi-story residential unit comprising 126 units, partly situated on the landmark site. However, the permit expired and no work was ever begun. Finally, the proposal could be the installation of a barrier-free access lift of the Kreischer House that was previously approved, installed, but been installed. Isaac Yontovian, Staten Island Land Development, and Ron Victoria, Linda Victoria, Victorian Associates are here to present a proposal and answer any questions. Thank you.
My name is Isaac. Isaac Yontovian. I'm not used to formal setting like this. 1999, but over 20 years ago, based on recommendation by my mother-in-law, Mary Kaplan, resident of Staten Island, and my wife, Rosalyn Kaplan, I was asked to purchase the Kreischer House, which is a landmark and historical site. I was invited at that time by the local councilman, at that time was still at Pila, to try to find out what's the best use of this land. Over 20 years ago, I purchased the land and I didn't come to tell the community what to do with the land. To best of my knowledge, I have held more community meetings for this property than anybody else that I know. We held meetings all over Staten Island to see what is the best use of the land. At that time, the concept of active adult community, 55 and older, was foreign to Staten Island. I brought that concept from other states and the community grabbed it and said, "That's what we want you to do." Year 2000, we started working with architects, engineers, archaeologists, all types, environmentalists. We met every possible condition and terms of all of the regulatory groups. I even went beyond that at that time, and you see it in your documentation. I brought a local group called taxpayer associations. And I made them a watchdog to see that we will deliver what they are saying, to make sure that we will preserve and bring back the glory of the Kreischer House, as well as making the community of active adults real senior housing type work. We received total support of the commissioner of that time, total complete support of community board three, total support of other groups within that community. And thank God, when we came here in front of this group, which, I mean, previous group of the landmark commissioners, we received your approval, and we delivered. What I mean by delivered is, 2006, before I moved the shuttle of dirt, I spent over a million dollars to repair the building that was completely decapitated. I mean, it was in a terrible shape, you will see the pictures. The previous tenant went bankrupt and walked away. And here I was, brought an architect who received an award for the work that we did from Staten Island Architects Society for the great job that we did. And then came sovereign bank going bankrupt. The bank that was basically financing this project gave us $34 million worth of construction funding, but then they went bankrupt. Then came the financial meltdown. And then I was waiting, and I can tell you this, I renewed once this approval and I paid over a hundred and some thousand dollars just to make sure that when the time gets better, I will do what I promised. Things didn't get better. And then in my family, some tragedies happened and therefore I moved to Los Angeles and waited till 2015. 2015, finally, I grabbed myself together and came back to Ron Victoria, said, "Let's do it." And we started all over. Forget about the previous approval. He said, "I said, 'I want something that we've worked and George is here from city planning and Richard is here.'" I told him, "You played in music, I dance." And this is a true Victorian village that we think it will be an example for others. And you can ask it from your own professionals and the professionals of the city planning and be sure that when I'm here, you hear it from my mouth, that when you approve this project, you will be very proud, that you approve the project that is going to be an example for the rest of Staten Island. It's a Victorian heart setting that we are going to make Kreischer House a focal point. Every member, that every resident in that development will have a stake in this house. I will make sure, and Ron Victoria knows about it, that there is no limit to what I will do to renovate, bring it back. I spend a lot of money and you know that. And to make sure that I will make the crowd and my family that has vested interests, emotional, historical, and commitment, that we will be also happy and proud of what we have done. Thank you.
Madam Chair, commissioners, thank you very much for allowing us to make this presentation today. Our team is very excited about what we're going to show you. And can you turn the mic back on?
Got it? Yep, okay. So, Ron Victoria, RA, registered architect. I have a 25-year history with this project, being involved with it. I even prior to the ownership by Isaac, when it was changed to an eating and drinking establishment, short-lived, but did, did help to bring the consciousness and some restoration repairs to the, to the home. So, my presentation is going to be broken down into four sections. We'll all go over the history briefly, the restoration process, the proposed development, and then supportive information. This is an application that's being filed with city planning under the section 170 Resolution 74711. It's for the construction of residential units, maintaining the house as a mixed-use facility, use group six, as a bright use, an eating and drinking establishment for plot time use, and also a community building supporting the homeowners of the, of the So, here we have the historical map circa 1898. The landmark site is shown in red. And we have three additional views that will, I'll be advancing the slide, showing you some historical photographs. The development of the property is at 4500 off the Kill Road. The landmark structure is the Kreischer House. The approximate acreage is just shy of five acres and the landmark site is approximately two acres. Residential site adjoining the property known as Fairview Home was Bultisaw Kreischer Mansion. So, the Kreischer family, originally the main house was here and the two summer cottages of the two sons are located here. This was the Kreischer factory and this is the Arthur Kill. Originally, there were two residences, again, owned by the sons. They were across from the brick factory. A lot of question is why the houses were not in brick, but they were summer cottages. So, there was a transient use, there was no central heating or cooling in the original structures. Kreischer Factory manufactured ornamental brick, fire brick, and terracotta. The area was originally known as Charleston and was called Kreischerville. The original area was actually known as Kreischerville and then changed to Charleston after World War I. The community supported the brickworks factory and the factory utilized the concept of a factory town approach with its employees. So, there were many outbuildings, including a church that was constructed by Bultisaw Kreischer. The foremen and some of the employees at the factory would live in homes that were on Kreischer Street. A couple of these residences still exist. And there were other supportive buildings, tavern, that was all part of Kreischerville. The Kreischer Mansion at Fairview was destroyed in 1931 and the building was subsequently erased and was destroyed by fire. Property was always utilized residentially. It was never utilized in conjunction with factory works. There was never any removal of clay or ponding at the site. So, once again, it was always utilized as a residential site. This picture was previously presented, but again, this is a view Kreischer Street looking southeastally, looking up at the two mansions. This is the structure that remains. This is the one that was raised approximately in the late 30s. Once again, a fire was the culprit there. This is a bird's eye view from a block print. You see the Kreischer Factory, you see the two sister houses beyond and Fairview, Bultisaw Kreischer's home would have been beyond that even further. And this is the killer. Photograph is approximately 1937. You have the Charles C. Kreischer House on the left and the Edward B. Kreischer House So, here we have a close-up photograph indicating the site. This is what's currently off the Kill Road. This is the remaining structure when this house was raised. Next site indicates a survey prepared by a woman of merit dated 6/21/19 by the site, actually comprising of the three tax lots. I think it was introduced as two. We have the landmark site toned in red. There's a small tax lot here and then a non-landmark L-shaped tax lot here. The gun club is located on the eastly side, Imperial Gun Club, and the MTA bus depot on the southerly side. There are two outbuildings, which was, one was a shed, the other one being a barn. The barn has substantially collapsed by the photographs in later slides we will see. A demolition application has already been filed with LPC and approved for the removal of this structure. Moving forward with the project, we will also be filing for a demolition application for this outbuilding. They were not original to the Kreischer House. As you can see in the previous historical map, you can see that those structures did not exist. There was a barn shape, a barn shape structure here, but it is off the current site. The next photograph is an aerial photograph showing the Kreischer House, the adjoining MTA garage, the gun club, mixed-use offices here, the Tides Development, which is currently was constructed at the factory site, small supportive strip store here for retail sales, and additional senior housing and active adult community, the Tides. This is currently off the Kill Road. And we have the adjoining buildings, which are outside of the photograph, which would be the supportive community on Wyand Avenue and Kreischer Street. Some important slide in to show what was previously approved and what our approach is now. I will go further into the site, the government, and the proposed portion of the presentation, but this is done for comparison purposes. So, the original structure, an L-shaped block structure, in which about 35% of the structure was on the landmark site, supported 130 dwelling units. The current proposal will be for 48 dwelling units. The lot coverage of the original building was 49,733 square feet. The current proposal in accumulation of all the 11 structures will be 44,625. The total floor area of the original structure was 157,704. The current total floor area for the 11 structures will be 92,580 square feet. The previous approval, combining built-in and on-site parking, was 181. The current proposal is 101 with 52 interior building spaces. The original building was four stories, 50 feet at the apex. The proposed building is three stories and less than 50 feet at the apex. The original street wall of this building, in perennial footage, was 600 square feet. The proposed combination of the street The proposed combination of the street wall on the proposed buildings is a total of 506 square feet. The next slide shows the original approval and the bulk and the size of the original building in comparison to the Kreischer House. The roadway, an internal roadway, and then our proposed development, in which we have multiple smaller buildings complementing in bulk and character and in mass, more in scale with the Kreischer House. We've also moved the roadway outside and moved the development of these homes internally a bit closer to the Kreischer House, but so that interaction and utilization of the entire piece of property can be promoted under the design. Bird's eye view shows the proposed structures. To a much greater degree, it showed the renovation, overall massing, and volume of the original structure in comparison to the Kreischer House. The new proposal increases the soft area and it promotes the utilization of property, less topographical modification to accommodate the proposed structures, and that individual structures can now be modified and be in line with the topography as it increases in elevation or decreases in elevation. The large building up here is going to require a lot of modification to the current site. Some of them being off the landmark site and some of them being on. The most important thing here is that the Kreischerville House in the proposal still remains pinnacle on the Knoll, with the current view from the city street being maintained. And that is a major design element here. And this is the visual corridor that remains unchanged and unobstructed by this development. Next slide. We present the restoration phase of the presentation in the following photographs. We have prior condition, restored condition on rebel 2004, and the current condition of the home. CNE will be filed for the complete restoration of the exterior of the house once again, with a reduced scope of working. It only involves replacement of railings, trim, steps, ADA lift, and general painting. The previous approval required roofing, removal of covered wraparound porch, reconstruction of the porch, new brick footings, replacement of a major portion of the clapboard, and the installation of lightning rods, which actually saved this building approximately five years ago when the chimney was struck by lightning. Previous condition. Restored condition by Isaac Dumitovian, which was commenced prior to even acting upon the modification of use and any further development. Current condition. So the maintenance and the financial cost of the house of this style and construction is ongoing. An HOA, HOA will be created to provide continuing maintenance that will result in the preservation of the landmark building. This will benefit the landmark structure in addition to a full-time utilization and a part-time community use, including an eating and drinking establishment. And proposed, and proposed has a right use for development on this property would not support the preservation and maintenance of the landmark. So we're using graphically some colors here to depict certain portions of the work. White, obviously, no work to be performed. Yellow, minor work, scraping and repainting. The green area indicating repair and reinstallation of materials. The red area indicating reconstruction of missing details. The duda system on all the elevations. There's a Yankee duda system or concealed duda system that needs to be replaced. Some glass work, casings, this door needs to be replaced. Stairways need to be replaced. This was the reference handicap lift, which will be reinstalled in its original previously approved condition. And the railing system exists with a hinge gate that included two panels that would open inward and would allow access onto the covered porch and eventually entrance into the Kreischer House. There's two plywood windows up here that are going to be, the plywood will be removed and glass reinstalled. Architectural asphaltation, well, that was approved under the previous restoration and currently in good condition. Once again, using the graphic color situation, we get a side view of the handicap lift, replacement of the stairs. There's a broken window here, some broken glass here. No major elements on this side, mostly painting and scraping, and a small replacement and reinstallation of the fascia. This is the easterly elevation. Again, the big element here is these decorative panels will all have to be reinstalled and replaced into the railing system there. Removal of two air conditioning condensing units, replacement of glass in the window. And I believe there's an air conditioning unit in this window up here, which was a window placement unit that's going to be removed that serves the air. Actually, the north side elevation survived the best. It requires just mostly painting and scraping. There is replacement of the built-in Yankee dudas again, and complete replacement of all the panels and railing system. Floor plans, the exterior porch, for the most part, needs painting and scraping, or scraping and painting. There was a replacement of a few floorboards that are going to be required. Reconstruction of the main staircase, secondary staircase, a vehicle door leading access into the cellar, the removal of the two air conditioning units. The temporary handicap rail, temporary ramp that was put in by, at some point, it does not meet ADA requirements and was only constructed with wood and plywood. That would be removed and the stairs replaced. Here's the handicap lift. Over this kitchen area, or what was previously the kitchen area for the residents, and then subsequently for the eating and drinking establishment, we have a flat roof. That roof needs to be entirely replaced, and the venting unit for the fire suppression system for the kitchen equipment, removed. These are the two outbuildings. These are current conditions. This building has already been filed for a demolition application, and that has been secured with LPC. This adjoining structure, which was a shed, a demo application will also be filed for that. So this brings us to our proposed development. And we'll start off with the site plan and the design process that we, I as the architect and the design team, and how we approached this project. So prior to meeting with any of the city agencies, the team went through a design approach to review concerns with other HOAs, senior housing committees, meetings with the borough presidents liaison, meeting with CPC, in which multiple designs were presented to CPC. Originally, we presented five different designs, some of them being detached single-family houses, some of them being townhouses, roadhouses, one large building, and then this cluster concept. The cluster concept was embraced as the best option that was presented at the time. And there's a few reasons for that, and I'll go through the design process again and let you know why that was embraced as the better and most appropriate design. We also presented it to city council, council person, who had one request, and that was to widen the road at this curve of Off the Kill Road in which the visual, vision corridor for traffic was obscured. Development back to the widening line, providing continued the sidewalk from the MTA garage for the entire frontage on the property. So curbs, sidewalks, street lighting, street trees, and grass area would be part of the improvements. So what we have is 11 cluster dwelling units surrounding the existing house on the east and south side for a total of 48 units. We're providing an interior roadway with off-street parking to visually separate the development from the adjoining properties. This creates a buffer area, both physical and visual. So what we did is we took this roadway and this parking area and put it on the perimeter of the property. What this did is it became a physical and separation buffer, both visual and functional, from the MTA garage and the gun club. It did put the residential units on the interior of the property, but closer to the Kreischer House. What we were looking to promote was full utilization of the property and not have the road be a separation between the property that the Kreischer House was sitting on and the units. The original development, if you remember correctly, was mostly on this area where the roadway is, and then a portion of it, about 35%, on the landmark site. But only 50% of the units had a visual corridor of the Kreischer House. In this development, what we've done is we've changed the streetscape approach. Very unique to Staten Island. So you enter the development through driveways, and there's built-in parking. And then what we've now done is the occupants of these homes no longer enter from the street, but they're forced to meet and greet in a social courtyard between the young, the dwellings, and the fronts of each dwelling, and then back-to-back, front of each dwelling, and then back-to-back, and that is repeated over here. And this creates that socialization area in between as people once again utilize the property as a whole. Also, the massing and the reduction of the street wall provides a small visual corridor at every point to see and enjoy the Kreischer House and the surrounding property. The only building that doesn't have a direct view of the Kreischer House will be this unit at the lower level, but the upper stories will be looking over the rooftop of these units and once again be able to see the property. So we have it connected in more ways throughout property. The street will be developed 35 feet wide. The street construction will need all DLT standards. There are no sidewalks adjoining the roadway. That increase the soft area and the green area visually negate the houses' visual greatest effect. The inclusion of sidewalks here, of which would not be utilized, we're not promoting people to walk along the street, we're promoting people to utilize the grounds as a whole. We have community gardens. We have exercise walkway. This is the portion of the site at this point. We have a higher elevated elevation and a lower elevation here. We're promoting a walkway in which there would be exercise equipment and suggestions at certain stations so that people could enjoy. We have a small social gathering area here with the introduction of a gazebo, and there will be a flagpole for any of the people who want to acknowledge the ritual of raising the American flag during the day. The house will be used part-time by the HOA. It will be privately as an eating and drinking establishment. The widened road, current on Off the Kill Road, will be designated to the widened area. And there are also built-in some of the comments that came up from some of the other HOAs. We have snow melt designation areas within the roadway. So we've taken approximately 30 feet here and created a drain that will be tied into the storm sewer system of the development. And then a river rock rubble will be installed. And the outcomes up there is we have one located here, here, and here. So when you plant the street, which will be done by private, private planning and under the responsibility of the HOA, they can now discard the snow, the snow dump areas, not accumulated in one area, not accumulated on existing parking spaces, and not have to pay for the removal of the snow on the internal roadway. We have soft areas, parking areas adjoining the units. Each unit will provide at least one minimum parking space per dwelling unit. And we've met the ratio of 1.5 parking spaces for the total number of dwelling units. We are providing accessory parking spaces here for the part-time use of the Kreischer House. We have visitor parking and additional accessory parking across the units at multiple locations. We also have a dog walk area behind here. And there is a city planning project in which we might be able to connect to Fairview Park, which I believe has been approved by City Planning. The big thing here is again, standing in the most prominent elevation of the building, the front entry. We have taking this point to the corner of the development to this corner of the building. We have a vision cone of 142 degrees. Once again, there's no proposed development for the Knoll, and the Kreischer House will always remain as it always did, the pinnacle on the Knoll. By doing individual units, again, as an architect, we can modify the elevations. Each one of these regress down the site. We have a building here, and these three buildings on the north entry, they are at a much lower elevation than the existing Kreischer House. This was a portion of the property, it was never utilized by any outbuildings, and is very heavily wooded. The view on Off the Kill Road, and again, it was very important for us to maintain under the designation report prominence of this building on the hill. That, you'll see in future slides, that development of these units do not obscure that view and that visual corridor of the Kreischer House on the hill. Also, once again, we have this red line here which designates the landmark site. Under 74711, the utilization to develop these private residences, we've been as sensitive as possible to this and serving many masses, both the requirements of LPC, the suggestions and requirements of City Planning, trees, egress, fire department access, and my own architectural requirements. We believe this to be the best and most appropriate use to enhance the current utilization of the Kreischer House and preserve the maintenance of the house. An additional comment is any has a right use in a manufacturing district, which this is in M1 District, there are no side yard requirements. There's a front yard requirement and a rear yard requirement after you go above two stories. That means that any structure could be built to a height of 25 feet right along this landmark line, and would be perfectly has a right. Scenario view, 3D helps to see clearly what's going on on the property. And once again, here's that visual corridor from this point to the front to the corner of the first proposed structure, and that's 142 degrees. Units on the northern end do not decrease the view of the Kreischer House in that current conditions from the road, there are existing mature trees which obscure the current house. The proposed lower two units and the apex of their roofs align with the covered porch of the landmark. So the top of this roof on this unit and this unit come no higher than the porch of the current Kreischer House. And you'll see that in further slides. So let's go with the street views. This is our north entry. Current conditions and the trees. And once again, you do not see the Kreischer House at all. And you can also see these photographs that they were taken at a time when there's no defoliation of the, there is defoliation of the trees. There's nothing more. During the summer and the spring, this view of the Kreischer House would be even more obscured. So this is an existing access to the property. We'd be coming in with our new entry here and the proposed development. We'd be coming in with our new entry here and the proposed development. This is 1A, a view moving again westerly, and a view where you may come to your first viewing of the Kreischer House. Once again, you can see the Kreischer House beyond. It is obscured. The trees have no leaves on them currently. And then in this, we superposed a building to show the same vantage point, topped off the trees graphically. We will not disturb those mature trees, because this has been done for graphic reasons. But you see that Kreischer House and the reference to the height of the roofs, again, Kreischer House would be visible even with the development of these lower units, but they're not going to be seen and it will be obscured by the mature trees. This is going again westerly, proceeding uphill on Arthur Kill Road. It's probably your first view of the Kreischer House. Or once again, it would be in the summer obscured by the development and these trees with their leaves. But what the main portion is here is due to the widening of the roadway and the introduction of street trees, sidewalks, will be necessary to install a gavion wall or a basket wall system. It will start from zero and go to plus six feet at certain areas. We stayed away from any interlocking block walls. We stayed away from a concrete wall, a stucco wall. We just felt that this would be much more in character with the unit, and eventually ivy and ground cover will be planted and eventually cover this basket wall, and we would go back to a fully green surface, more complementing the Kreischer House in the current site conditions.
You're not supposed to remove those big trees, I assume?
No, we are not, we are not. And this is a slide to show you trees to be removed and trees that are going to be made and will sleep. Plenty of retention of the trees at that point. So the next slide probably brings us to our first visual photograph of the mansion. Once again, the pinnacle on the hill, but it was really being introduced to show the gavion wall system and some ground cover and growth that would eventually take part on these walls. And we see the, lack of a better word, I guess the rear portion of the buildings. I don't want to call them the backs, but you see the rear portions of these buildings and open porches. The roofs were designed in a hip rather than a gable, again, to slope away from the mansion and again, decrease the volume and the massing of the proposed buildings. And all of the elevations that are on the backsides of these structures or rears, all introduce hip roofs so that we, again, in an attempt to reduce the massing.
Is there anything built inside the roofs, or that's just above the top unit?
So a portion of the roofs, they are quite high to match the character of the house in the Victorian style. There are loft areas that will be utilized. I have some floor plans to show you the utilization. And those upper stories in the second-floor apartments could be used for bedrooms, could be a loft area, or could be a home office for people 55 and older. We still need to work. So this is the west entry. You can see some existing conditions on the lusty boat and the screen walls. This is where our roadway would come in. We currently have access to the property here through a curb cut. We would be widening that, of course, to the 30-foot width curb cut, giving access to the 35-foot roadway. And again, DOT standards here with parking, six-foot buffer strip here, and you'll see on the latest slide, this slide was prepared much earlier. But we are going to possibly introduce solar panels over these parking areas, which are entirely off the landmark site, which will be able to offset the cost of the HOA and promote further preservation of the mansion.
How far are the buildings on the left set back from the road?
Yeah, we adhere to 18 feet. 18 feet is the standard guideline for setbacks for residential units in South Richmond, so we adhere to that.
Is it zoning?
It's zoning, yeah. We're not, there are no front yards required. We have grid manufacturing district.
So the 18 foot is a flat?
Just a setback that architecturally we're proposing for the development.
Right, you're not required, it could be 15, it could be 20, there's no...
Could be 12, could be 10, yes.
So just to follow on that, with two buildings on this side that approach on the landmark site, how many feet are actually on the landmark site?
It varies. I mean, you're probably talking approximately 10% of the building's structure. It's not a rectangular shape, but you're probably talking about 10% of the structure. Okay, so here's some comparisons. This would be from the internal roadway. So we are now standing on the roadway, looking at the elevations of these buildings. The second slide will show the view from the Kreischer House, looking at the rear of the residences. So again, you always have this visual corridor. Here is the north entry, in which we have those lower buildings, and you, once again, you can see that they don't come up any higher than the first story porch, and they progress down with the topography, again, being sensitive to the existing topography on the property. This has been improved into the street. Once again, we adhere to a complete perimeter setback of 18 feet for these buildings also. Following slide, again, is a view from the Kreischer House. And again, design-wise, we maintain to make the units smaller, so the massing and the volume of the proposed buildings didn't overwhelm the current massing and volume of the Kreischer House. And again, the sensitivity to step the buildings with the topography. So the widows walk, the roof structures, the chimneys, always are the dominant element being maintained with the sensitivity of these buildings being lower and less in height Exterior elevations, these are the main units. So what we attempted here was a style to complement the Kreischer House, but not to replicate the details. They were meant to relate harmoniously to the subject property of the landmark in color, tone, character, form, and materials. And the elevations indicate the visual corridor and the social corridor between the buildings. So we show two masses here. This would be the street entry into the parking. Car access is from the interior roadway. You want car for dwelling unit. We had introduced the brick to match the brick and replicate or complement the brick at the first wall level and the foundation of the Kreischer House. We'll be introducing mailboxes for each cluster unit, fire hydrants, street lighting. The residential dwelling units are going to be averaging between 1,200 and 1,600 square feet. Unit A will have four dwelling units. Two store, the second story will be two level units. There's ABA accessibility from the building garage up to the second floor with an internal staircase and an additional elevator. Each unit has a covered accessory balcony, allowing them to enjoy the outside. And we're going to introduce the brick at the lowest level, cementitious siding of clapboard on the exterior, four-inch casings around all windows and doors, trim and waterboards, and an architectural shingle. So that's you today. This is unit B. Again, similar in style and character. The big thing here is this will be six dwelling units. It has eight, the ability to park eight cars inside, and has access from two different drive-through points. So the cars can enter an egress or enter an egress at two different points. And once again, promoting common area, having people meet and greet the entries to the residential units, all happen in one area. The exterior design elements are similar to building A. Brick on the low level, waterboard, clapboard, railing system, architectural shingle. Unit C, again, is very similar to unit B. Two access points, six dwelling units, two access points to the cars, six dwelling units, eight built-in parking spaces. And again, this is that area that will be utilized as a loft area to the second-floor dwelling units, or an additional bedroom, open loft area, or home office. The top part of the roof will be utilized for support of equipment, air conditioning, and heating units. Same architectural details. It's a bird's eye view, again, showing the project and the maintaining of that visual corridor here and these mature trees that are going to remain that actually, once again, obscure the current view of the Kreischer House. So this brings us to our additional supportive information, and I'd like to go over this. So I was asked to present the floor plans for the units that are on the landmark site. These are those floor plans. Subfloor plan with the parking. First floor plan, one dwelling unit, second dwelling unit, two bedrooms, balconies, internal laundry areas, elevator, common staircase, and then entrances to the individual dwelling Second floor dwelling units, access either, again, through the elevator or the common stair, or walking up the staircase and going through the common porch. Dwelling units, one large master bedroom, oversized living room, dining room, kitchens, internal staircase that would give access to the third story, which could be bedrooms, bedroom loft combination, totally loft combination, home office, but this would be within the roof structure of the building with microventilation being supplied through doghouse tumors, again, being consistent with elements that currently exist on the Kreischer House. The section showing the relation of floor heights, nothing really to speak with. This would be that third story area and then the attic area for support of equipment, heating and cooling. And then we've raised the ceilings and gone to, I believe it's 9 feet there, just to allow us architecturally to add some ceiling moldings and do some aesthetic changes in ceiling heights So just so the commissioners know, we've done a complete analysis in toilet level on 92 and 94, which is solar-ready. Many infrastructures will be waived and don't meet the solar-ready requirements. It will allow us to go to DOB to waive these requirements. Some of the units can comply with 4 kilowatts per unit. And again, I can come back to this if time permits, but I've been asked to move on to some solar ready. So here's the trees. So in South Richmond, we have a requirement to maintain one tree credit for 1,000 square feet of lot area. Obviously, the green, it designates a tree that's going to be maintained, and the red, the removal of trees. Architecturally, certainly if a tree is in an area where it's going to be developed by the building or the roadway, it obviously needs to be removed. We also took the liberty of re-indicating a tree that is less, that is within the 15-foot buffer area or the construction zone that city planning applies to the project as being removed. There are currently, at 1,000, we have a site that will require 207 tree credits. We currently have 406 existing on the site prior to development. 197 tree credits will be removed, 200 will remain, so we're saving approximately 51% of the current trees on the site. Now, this doesn't even include any of the additional street trees that will be planted as one tree per 25 linear feet, or the trees that we will plant as part of the buffer area around the building and screen planting that will be planted as one tree per 25 square feet. And it does not include any of the planting of trees between the units to create that social and cluster area between the units. So we more than satisfy the tree requirements. Now, the important thing here is to see that the bulk of the major mature trees surrounding the mansion, except for what has to be removed to accept the gavion wall, are all being maintained. And they are well outside the perimeter of the construction zone of any of the units. So we're not falsely indicating the saving of these trees, these trees will be saved.
Do you plan to build these trees so that the final person...
The landscape plan hasn't been developed. The only ones that I can tell you right now is the street trees at 1 per 25 linear feet and the screen plank for the parking at 1 per 25 linear feet. So the materials that we're going to use, we use a cementitious hardy plank product on the exterior of the houses, Melvino. We'll be using an architectural series window, simulated divided light, architectural roofing, and all these items will be discussed and worked with staff. The brickwork will be incorporating these three brick types, which will, again, reduplicate or replicate to some degree the brick that's utilized on the current mansion. And we will also be working with staff with the same tone and restoration on the house and the color palette that was originally approved. 20 years ago, we had an analysis done of the paint for color, sheen, and location of all of it. We'll be utilizing that reporting again with staff. And to wrap things up here, I included a copy of the designation report. And that completes the restoration. Do we have the slide presentation of the visual street, the video that we wanted to show here?
I think they have prepared a video, so why don't we quickly look at the video and then we can move to questions.
So this video will show the view of the development from Arthur Kill Road and the Apologize for the quickness of this, but I was told I had 30 seconds. Now heading southerly, coming into the westerly entry gate. Once again, the mansion is always in vision. This is a cross from the ties and our westerly entry. Thank you very much. That completes the initial presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions? We have some testimonials, maybe awesome questions after that. Jane Parvill?
Good afternoon. I'm Jane Parvill, resident of Staten Island, here to oppose the proposed development of 4501 Arthur Kill Road. The people of Staten Island longed, may be wanting, Kreischer Mansion, its beauty and its history. The proposed development will, in essence, destroy the mansion by overdevelopment of the site. The sighting of the house and grounds are crucial to the house's historic value as a property which reflects the industry which supported its being built. During the height of the production... During the height of the production of Kreischer brick, Kreischer produced 3 million clay tile bricks a year. I respectfully ask the commission to protect this beautiful example of Staten Island's past and to guide this development in such a manner so as to protect our history and the beautiful and poor Kreischer mansion.
John Phil Collins?
Good afternoon. Thank you, John Phil Collins, representing the preservation of Staten Island. I appreciate the architects presenting this. I was able to hear versus sitting online, so thank you. I also want to make up, I want to say thank you that we're here. But I also want to say I'm hoping in 2020 we will see more landmark sites presented to the commission. There's been a dearth of landmarks presented on Staten Island since 2016. And we seem to come here just for modifications to existing sites. With that said, thank you Chairperson Carroll and commissioners for allowing us to testify. The League is getting tentative support of the above hearing. Items with some concerns. The adaptive reuse proposal allows for restoration and repurposing of this historic and neighborhood landmark. This is a key element for Charleston and Tottenville in New York City, Department of City Planning, working West Door 23rd Plan. So we applaud this because it focuses on what the community had talked about in developing that plan. The preservation we hopes is redevelopment plan sets a standard for appropriate and harmonizing future residential projects in nearby historic neighborhood of Kreisherville, which has two existing landmarks, individual landmarks. And the concerns that we have, given the current surrounding M1 zoning and immediate adjacency to the MTA bus facility, additional tree planting and green would benefit the development of the greater neighborhood. The orientation based on the initial view, the orientation of units 1, 2, and 3, building type A, appear too close to the road and seem to obstruct the approaching views of the house when heading toward Arthur Kill. A reconsideration and placement and/or sizing of dwellings is suggested. And the placement of the parking area in front of the main house, the landmark house, seems to detract from the pastoral and hilltop setting of the landmark. Thank you for your time and attention to today's application.
Thank you.
Mr. Goff, part of the society for the architecture of the city. The question of the previous approval is interesting. Because of zoning issues, the project required a special permit through city planning based on a 7471 report from the L P C. Both actions were conditional and obviously would not apply to the present proposal. The original approvals were conditioned on a distance of 120 feet from the landmark to the new construction. That distance is not maintained here where the distance between the landmark and unit 3 is shown on our draw as 45 feet and for unit 7, 8, 69 feet. So far from suggesting that a previously approved project should be approved again. Clearly, the opinion of the earlier commission would be that the distance is proposed to take the heart insufficient. Further, the 7471 required a continuing maintenance plan. Now, again, the slides that appear online, they show a restoration which was not shown here, which illustrates a great deal of feeling pain. This so-called restoration would have been unnecessary if that continuing maintenance plan had been offered. We would appreciate clarification of the status of that maintenance plan and the intent of adoption of the second plan. When the Kreischer House was designated in 1966, the landmark site left a modest open space around the mansion to maintain some of the original setting. The site did not come and near the entire building behind former brickworks or the open yard that once surrounded the mansion, but it's now lost. In 2001, we opposed the approach from the construction lower as best in this in view of the small size of the landmark site. The use of solar panels is welcome, and a different design might accommodate more. The plan to build nine small apartment buildings with individual garage entrances should be considered. Their disposition and massing completely burned to the world of 1555 when the mansion was built. No Pottery Village ever lived in. They should not weaken. Be masquerading in pseudo-exiled planning composed mainly of synthetic materials. The Kreischer houses deserve special maintenance.
Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, Historic Six Council. Nineteen years ago, H T C testified against the first proposed intervention to the Kreishers landmark site. We asked the commission to, quote, "require that the applicants gouge back the part of the project on the landmark site, simplify the design as to not compete with the existing house, and retain the trees that connect the house to the landscape," end quote. H T C understands that the L P C approved development on the site although the permits have long expired. Upon examining and comparing the two plans, the one large building proposed in 2001 and the several buildings proposed for 2020, H T C's committee actually prefers the version of the 2001 plan. The proximity of the new buildings to the landmark should be reexamined. As currently proposed, the addition and arrangement of 11 new structures that have larger footprints than the Kreischer house leaves the landmark lost in a forest of McMansions. The current massing of the enormous hip roofs, several eaves, are suburban design trends straight from the era of 2001 and should be retired. The construction of one large building empty first to the house seems like a better solution by comparison. The site plan should be carefully studied as this is a lone patch of Staten Island's former blue collar danger. The current proposal reads as a clear cut removing trees and introduces a substantial amount of paving. But I did see that trees were being retained, which is not clear when we first reviewed this. To conclude, the design and material choices are sensitive and do take cues from the Kreischer house, but their application is welcome in a resaled structure which would not approach actual landmark. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? We have a letter from Staten Island Community Board III supporting the application that's presented today. Would you like to respond to some of the comments, in particular the size and proximity to the house?
So a couple of issues I'd like to respond to. Under the original development, you can see the development, which is also the improvement of parking paved area, parking spaces. What we did is we actually reversed the building footprint, became the roadway. And the parking area development became the individual units. But once again, what we attempted to do in this design architecturally is we have the gun club over here, we have the MTA garage, which is a compromise of separating the habitable dwelling units and increasing the proximity of a dwelling unit that faced the MTA garage. Under this original development, the MTA garage didn't exist. You know who the joint name was going to be. So what we're looking to do is increase that separation but also be sensitive to the separation between the house. So that answers that one question regarding that. We are providing a visual and a natural buffer area here. We chose to put the parking here. Here, the Kreischer house was surrounded by parking and then a billboard of a much larger building. I don't believe this to be sensitive at all. As far as sizing the units, we attempted to be in character, more in character with the footprint of this building. I don't think we can compare the ominous size of this building compared to what we present here. Again, the presentation, in regards to the question about deterioration of the building here, my client had no obligation to proceed with the restoration of that building unless he proceeded with the modification of use. So, although we're not happy with how the building has been maintained in the last 15 years, my client had no obligation to even spot that restoration. But certain structural elements have been increased, repaired, and replaced. We now have the painting and scraping project to do instead of the total replacement of the footings and foundations and recreation of the porch. Architecturally, there's no masquerading of materials here. At this point, this building was not going to be covered with wooden clapboard. We're going to use synthetic materials on that also. We've been as sensitive as possible by using hardy plank, which has been an acceptable product used. We used it in D E C work for sandy. It adheres to, doesn't wave during the heat and cooling of the buildings. You don't get popping the vinyl siding. We're certainly not going to do this building in stucco. So it was the most appropriate material to utilize in the building. And again, we attempted to reduplicate some of the elements, but lower in tone, lower in detail, and never, never replicate the details to detract from the original question.
Yeah, a couple of questions. How many units were in the original?
126.
So you're really...
It was approved for 1/3.
And now it's 45?
48.
48.
So we reduced the volume.
What was the floor area before and now? Sorry. I meant to be sorry. I just had a good reason I should have written it down.
Okay, so just to go over those requirements to answer any other questions. Lot coverage of the previous approval was 49,733. The proposal now is 44,000 lot coverage. Floor area of the original proposal was 157, 704. We're now at 92, 580. Parking was 181 cars. We're now at 101. The original building was four stories and a 50-foot height. We're now three stories with less than a 50-foot height. The street wall of the original approval was 600 lineal feet. The total of the 11 buildings now broken up is a total of 506 lineal feet.
Thank you. I have a question. I don't know whether you can answer this or not, but this. When, how does the transition of ownership work here? When does the homeowners association take over the property as a whole at some point? Is there a transitional group in between? How's that work?
So John, what I'll do is, I'm an architect. I'll transfer that question to council here. If Lyndon could maybe answer that.
Victoria, Council for the Project. What we're, the intention is that the actual landmark structure, the building itself, will be owned separately as a unit in the homeowners association. So whether an individual who's possibly going to be the ultimate commercial operator of a eating and drinking establishment that we're seeking to also have approval done on this, whether they're the ones who actually own it or if the homeowners association does in some way decide amongst themselves that they would rather have ownership of it, they would have the ability to do that. But the intention at this point is that the structure will be a unit. So there'll be 49 units on the property.
So at some point, it's possible that... Who remains, what I want to try to figure out is who remains obligated under this? Because...
The homeowners association.
I'll tell you, when he's obligated, I'm very happy.
Yes.
When I get to the next stage, I just want to know who it is I'm dealing with.
The homeowners association will be obligated.
Let me, since you've... That wasn't my name to me. I need this money. At this point, whoever owns the house will be responsible to meet the 7471 obligation. And if another operator or another owner comes, I will make sure that in the deed or in the contract and the sales, it's a condition. No one can own that piece of property without signing off on the fact that he has to meet these requirements. So one way or the other, homeowners association is going to be just a supplemental group that is going to participate in the cost of maintaining the Kreischer house because they are going to enjoy some of it. And I'd like them to have a stage in giving this up. I don't want them to just be there and not to have any interest in it. They should pay some amount of financial contribution to make sure that they have interest in it. And then they have to obviously be observing on the board that is making sure every five years, every seven years, I don't know how often, the architect will have to go there making sure that it's being maintained and it's not neglected. Madam Chairman, can I just say one statement in response to the question?
Absolutely.
You know, to me, this house is also a valuable historical and landmark. It's an insult to my intelligence somebody to come and tell me that I don't care for it and I have neglected it. I haven't. As I said, in 2006, without even moving a shot up there, I spent over a billion dollars on giving it. And what can I do? I don't have any building built there. I haven't done anything, no benefit whatsoever. And my taxes, you check this. My taxes have been tripled, off the chart because I had approval, which is not expired. So I'm still paying taxes for approval that I don't have. So please, consider the fact that I care and I'm here to assure you that you hear from me firsthand that hopefully you will, for the second time, approve this project, which is far less of a project. That four-story building was much higher, 130 unit approval. This is far less of a project.
Thank you. And I also want to speak with you regarding to the homeowners association. There will be a fund established when, as each year it is sold, a portion of the proceeds will be set aside to establish a fund for maintenance of the house. And a portion of each monthly homeowners association fee, it will be set out in the homeowners agreement, that would be put into the fund also. So, you know, in addition to the homeowners association having the ability to make decisions, you know, ad hoc, at least that money will be there to ensure that the maintenance plan is adhered to and that, you know, the grounds are kept up with the way the landlords would intend to do it.
And just like you just popped up, so John, under the terms of special permit, you know, the entire property can be subject to restrictive declaration. And so the homeowners association will have liability. How they choose to ultimately, you know, sign that within their own group, ultimately, the city would be looked up to the homeowners association to sort of make sure that the building is maintained in some form.
So that restrictive declaration legally binds all future owners until, 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 as that special permit is executed.
Question?
Yes, one second.
So I'll indulge you for a minute to explore something that was raised in the testimony about first scheme versus the second. So the first scheme basically was 160,000 square feet versus 100,000 for the new one. So it's 60,000 square feet smaller than the new one. But the lot coverage is nearly the same, right? It's 49,000 versus 44,000. So that suggests to me that there's, maybe there's more inefficiency in the current plan. Am I reading that wrong? And also, could one get the same result in terms of units, floor area, by just locking off the floor of the old scheme?
Okay, so I'll attempt to answer that. So it's not a matter of inefficiency, but it's a matter of height versus lot coverage. You can have a small footprint, but increase the height of a building and actually get a greater amount of floor area. As an architect here, approaching this project was to put this project on a seesaw or a bubble. And what we attempted to do again was height the building with respect to the existing Kreischer house, reduce that or attempt to decrease it. Decrease floor area, still give my client a market return on this. 48 dwelling units seemed to be the absolute minimum that we needed to do that. So we reduced everything on this. And again, I still believe that the individual dwelling... And again, I still believe that the individual dwelling units in size, height, floor area, and location is a more appropriate and more sensitive design than the overall building. I am not here to trash the original design approval of the decision that was made at that time. The big decision then was to bring senior or active adult housing to the community. The Staten Island community is grossly underserved by that. We have some five-hundred-thousand people on Staten Island. I don't think we have senior or active adult units for one percent of that. We didn't want to make the dwelling unit count too small because that promotes transient use. We don't want people to have this being a stop-by dwelling. We're hoping that people will maintain and stay here. So that also determines the size of the units and the, and the styling of the units. And your point is well taken. Can I make and get more floor area by raising the height of the building? I can.
No, that's not why I asked. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. The existing buildings around one-hundred-and-sixty, and you're saying it's four story, I'm sorry, the old building, the old scheme was one-sixty thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy, and it was four stories, it was really three and four, undulated. The new buildings are one-hundred-thousand, ninety-two point five square feet, and they're two to three stories, again, undulated. So to be very gross about the math, very simplistic, one-sixty versus a hundred is a difference of one-hundred-thousand square feet, right? I'm sorry, sixty thousand square feet, excuse me. And so could you have the exact same scheme with the exact same unit count, the exact same size by taking the two thousand of the earlier scheme and locking the floor off?
Yes.
Thank you.
That would satisfy the square footage, but it wouldn't satisfy the overall intent of the project. And the intent, at the intent of the project, what, what we wanted to do in this project was to, part of the reason why the, the house felt deterioration, it wasn't heated, it wasn't cooled, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't living. So to get this house maintained as practical matter, despite the fact that Mr. Antogia has been paying taxes, you know, it, it costs over a hundred thousand dollars to paint this house first. So, you know, it, it's an expensive endeavor. So what we wanted to do was we felt that the first plan, while everybody would be living next to the Kreischer House, they wouldn't really be doing anything with it. They wouldn't really be interacting with it. They wouldn't really be vested in it. This new plan gives, because of the park-like setting and because of the fact that there are porches on the property and, and the intent is to get people to live in the setting, it gives them a vested interest in making sure that the, the house does stay maintained. They will live on the whole property. So again, it's a little bit unique from a Staten Island standpoint because on Staten Island, we have a very typical development model. House, little square backyard. Everybody goes in and out the front door, everybody goes in and out the driveway, parks on the street, locks on the street, and that's, that's how they live. Here, because, and in addition to that, we need to satisfy what the city planning's concerns were and what the community's concerns were. They didn't want another one-hundred-and-thirty unit development. They didn't want one-hundred-and-eighty cars. They didn't want that. They already have the ties now across the street, which is a new development that wasn't here when the first proposal went through. So now we have so many more people in the neighborhood that we felt that giving everyone a, a substantial house, you know, the, the condominium units are fairly large in the scale of what most fifty-five and older condominium units are. But a lot of people coming into these units are going to be people coming from five-thousand square foot houses. So this is still a major downside for them, without them living in the small apartments that the first unit would have, the first proposal would have given them. So that was really the intention of, with us working with city planning and the needs and the, the interest that they had with the community, this was what wound up being a, a really good solution to getting the, the house lived in again in some way, appreciated by the community, and, and getting enough income on the property that would assure that that continues.
So I just have a, a follow-up discussion to this, or question, I mean. So the houses on the left side of the plan are mostly off the landmark site, there is a little bit of a portion, but the houses on the other side are on the landmark site. Can we go to the view that shows those in relationship to their main house? So I think that what I'm hearing you all say, along with many other things, is that because these, so the, the, what was important in the original approval was that the house sits on its own and it still retains some prominence on the site. And while these houses, while there's more of them on the landmark site and they come closer to the street, because there's more space in between them and they're lower in height, is this sort of a net exchange or equal exchange in terms of the relationship?
That was the design approach. And again, again, lesson value, the trees are maintained, the development of these houses really do not obscure the current view of the house at those vantage points. Okay. So again, this is the, the north, oops, the northerly view, the unit is lower. I think the photographs really, and the comparison really explain, let's see. I think these pictures are really telling us. This is the same vantage point from the street. There is no visibility of the Kreischer House. We are replacing those streets with the dwelling unit. Again, moving up and taking this vantage point and looking towards the Kreischer House. There is no view of the Kreischer House yet. There are mature trees. Our development being superimposed really is right here. So we did not, once again, obscure the view of the Kreischer House. Progressing again up, this is the first glimpse you get of a full view of the Kreischer House. You don't see our development at all. I think you see the rooftops of so many units that wave at the back and beyond. And at no point do they really detract from the current Kreischer House.
And so in that view, the previous scheme, you might have seen a little bit less on the left, but they would have been taller.
Yes. You would have started to get a view of that, and they would have been bushed over there, four stories plus roof on that, right. And again, this view, the vantage point is almost exactly the same, and the develop, the proposed development, again, does not reduce that vision corridor that we originally spoke of that currently exists here and here. The next view is the bus garage. We don't even see the Kreischer House. Show up in the photograph here. And again, the bus garage on the, the radiant side.
And go back one view. So in this view, the first two houses are entirely off the landmark site. Starting to, maybe the porches and a little beyond that, that...
Correct, the balconies and the overhangs on the roofs. And again, I think I brought it up. We attempted to reduce that visual encroachment by utilizing hip roofs, which slope away rather than being straight up and increasing that wall facade. Okay? And visually, and reduce the overall height of the building visually.
Other questions?
I have just a question.
Yeah.
So, I, I would just, you know, Staten Island in general is a vibrant community. And, you know, this is based on the current market, market. Do you think that the buyers should be two cars? Would want two cars, meaning a car is only a commodity?
So there's built-in car garages internally for the dwellings at one. And then we've reduplicated the onsite parking, which is for the residents and the members on, out there at point five. So we have, hold on, I'll get you the exact number of onsite parking. So there's a hundred and one spaces totally provided, built in and onsite. There's fifty-two indoor parking spaces and forty-nine outdoor parking spaces.
So are they proximate to the dwellings of that?
Well, they're directly across from the dwellings. I'm sorry, let me see if I can get to the proposed site line. Yeah. So we have accessories. So what we tried to do is, we have a cluster unit here, we have parking. We have a cluster unit here, we have parking. We have a cluster here, we have parking. Over here, we were not able to do that. So if this person does walk out in a unit, they do have a secondary car, you know what? They're going to have to enjoy the park-like setting, walk, go up and be on the repair to get to their parking space. But it's their second car. They'll just have to make a decision whether that's the husband or the wife that takes the walk.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. So if there are no other questions, I think we'll have a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to present.
Thank you for a very detailed presentation.
It's going to fall on me. So I guess I'm going to start by expressing my appreciation for all the work that was actually done on the house. You know, a million dollars of investment in a landmark building on Staten Island, it could exceed some total of money invested on all landmark buildings on Staten Island during the same period. And, and so I do greatly appreciate that. And, and I do actually think that there is a very big distinction between the kind of work that had to be done that first time around and the kind of work that's left to be done this time around. But those of us who've seen this structure our entire lives, it was in pretty hurtish for a long, long time. And it is truly a beautiful building, even in its, when needing paint, et cetera, it is pretty perfect. The, I also appreciate the fact that they're, they're concerned about the visual corridor. I, if, if I had my brothers, I'd get a little bit more on that northwest corner. But the fact is that they, the, what they've shown us here is accurate, which is to say, when you're driving, Arcticville Road, north to south, the first moment that you see the house is, is right there. And that's not an exaggeration. You, you are pretty far along before you actually see it. So I think, well, I would like to see a little bit more of it. I, 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 you know, there would be asking for more than what we've already got. Which, you know, I'd love to have, of course. But the, if the, we also have to take into account the fact that the survival of this structure is, is in some part based upon, and we've talked about this at other times, the actual utilization of the building for something productive. So, I'm going to talk about appropriateness. I'll let the architects explain some of these details. I am, what does concern me is that some of the structures are off close to the, to the, to the Kreischer House. And there may be some room there to, to back off a little bit. And the second thing that really concerns me is that, is that gavian wall, which is to say, I'd love to know that there's an alternative, that I realize I need to shore that up and the expansion of the road, et cetera. But there are many, many alternatives to gavian walls, and I hope those will be considered. I think I'm going to leave it to my fellow commissioners now, and then I'll come back and dive in later.
Michael, you had a lot of questions. I think you have some thoughts that you want to share.
Yeah. And this is an interesting site because of the seventy-four, it's got a lot of aspects. And the question I have for myself is, how does one apply that higher standard to this setting? And I think there are two ways, I would think of it. First is the house itself, obviously. While I, I, I share Michael's admiration for the owner and his endeavoring to do the restoration a few years ago, I worry that in this case, extra diligence is needed to research the paint. This is a, he did wait in a, a block away from the water. And so the way that it is applied should be carefully researched with scabs so that it doesn't peel in such a short period of time. I also am concerned about the roof. I think for a seventy-four, seven-eleven, we would not accept a composite asphalt roof marveling. And I don't think we should clear, I think it should be whatever the original material was. I assume it was slithy, but I don't know. I think that another way to look at the seventy-four, seven-eleven in this context could be the landscape. I think that, you know, how this site is seen has always been centered in landscape. And so I think it's worth considering how the restoration of the landscape to the best of our ability would be a worthwhile endeavor. And actually include landings, include trees, materials for the wallways, et cetera. So I think that that bears a little bit of examination as well. I think that in terms of the site plan, while I think that one could accept, I'm convinced that, you know, not knowing the site anywhere here at all, as John does, I'm convinced that the, the visibility corridor is included when you're coming from the north anyway by the trees. So it is, it is kind of acceptable to me that there is some encroachment from that side. But I, I do think that, that, I reject what the lawyer was saying in terms of the, the trade-off here. I think that as a starting point, if one imagines the earlier scheme, a floor lower, and even if one imagines that same scheme with the road on the outside and the building on the inside, the result would be more favorable to the landmark than this, this current plan. And that would not change a single square foot of the proposal, a single square foot of size, the units. It would not change one iota from a market point of view, other than to change the model from one of a garden apartment layout, which is the current proposal, to an apartment building layout, which I think is not, or a townhouse layout, which is not incumbent in that neighborhood either, as far as I know it. So I, I don't think that one can totally dismiss the idea of looking at the old scheme as, as a reasonable alternative here. However, you know, we're not asked to look at that. I don't, you know, looking at this scheme, I think that it's a no-brainer to get the buildings on the south end off of the landmark site by reducing that front yard setback. I think it's equally a no-brainer to pull the buildings on the northwest side as close to the road as is practical. And to introduce significant screening between the buildings and the landmark, they're adding trees in between the garden apartments for aesthetic purposes, and that's great. But I think that on a site like this, which is always seen in, 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 you know, as a kind of a suburban type setting or a rural type setting, the use of trees would be totally appropriate to create a screen as a backdrop and would obscure the existing houses. Also, the existing buildings can easily be lowered. The second floors can have, you know, the roof line can come down at least three or four feet so that the second floor windows are dormer or partially dormer, which is very typical of that style. The second floor, the balconies all have full roofs over their second floors. My guess is that even senior folks like, like us here or, or in the catchment age could, could accept an uncovered porch or a, or a flat-covered porch that was more similar to the existing house. And that, that, all, all the porches face the building, so, the name of the house, the landmark. So by, by removing that gable or, or removing it altogether and having the second floor porch be exposed, or having it to be, have, have, have a very low slope roof similar to the roof over the back of the porch on the, on the main house, would significantly reduce the impact of the surrounding buildings on the landmark. And lastly, I think, oh, two things. First of all, the gap-down walls should be regular grounded stone veneer over concrete retaining walls. And the style should be appropriate to the main house. My confusion as to how that was landscaped in the past. Certainly, there's plenty of examples of how Victorian houses had that perimeter walls. And I think that that parking that appears to the right of the main house is very, very problematic. And I think that a different place should be found for that parking. Instead, it's not within that view corridor, which they've otherwise done some large preserve.
I think these kinds of preservation issues are really difficult to come to terms with. First of all, I want to thank Staten Island for letting me know about this remarkable house. I had no idea. Guess I should go to Brooklyn occasionally, right? So, wanted help. But it was a house in another era. And so you have to kind of weigh the estate, let's call it another era, and you have to weigh the good demand here as we now look at ways of preserving the house with development around it. Not this summer, of course, but the fly of the state of the many other such houses all across the country who face this similar problem. I too, before I heard the testimony and before sort of asking the questions, wondering about the earlier scheme and if we could save that idea but lower it or reduce its length or something like that, to reduce sixty thousand feet. I have the same thing going in my head. And of course, we don't see it, and I can't judge it exactly, but I'm thinking that maybe this is a better approach. It seems more in concert, I think, is what I understand Staten Island to be. And it is a different market, so I think we have to understand that a garden apartment sort of approach to this market may be a different approach than an apartment house approach, even if you answer similar. So I want to say that I think the stills are very effective and the animation was extraordinarily effective in helping to convince me that this Victorian pile on top of a hill, the pinnacle, is a really important aspect of this. And I think it kind of maintains its presence even with this new intrusion. We all love it to be not there at all, sure, but that's not the world we live in now. And I think we have to figure out a way of paying to have this extraordinary residence remain in our midst. And I think maybe this is an appropriate way to do it. I do appreciate the architects trying to do it in terms of the views and those sorts of things. I do appreciate Commissioner Goldman's ideas about reducing the height further. I think that's something that can be done to lessen the impact. And I think with those sorts of tweaks, I guess I'd say that I could be in favor of this general approach. Would I like to see that one whole unit knocked off? Yes, but if that's gonna jeopardize the economics of it, I think they've made a persuasive case that we're still seeing a lot of what we see today. And that house right there is right now covered with pretty penetrable trees, so maybe not seeing it now, maybe in the 20 minutes.
Yeah. I was thinking about this, and in a way, it's, you know, we're looking at things going on in Manhattan where development is used to help restore and maintain the restoration of a wonderful and historically significant landmark. Now, the developments tend to be very vertical. The difference here, it's really not any different, except that it's happening on a horizontal plane, and that has to do with where it's happening. First of all, there's the ability to do it. And the site enables it to happen. So, but the goal is the same, where a private developer is developing a project that will ultimately take a landmark that's important, it's not only for the world, for the city, and in the end, generate funds not only for the developer but also for the permanent maintenance of a wonderful and significant building. For me, this is, and Fred spoke to it, let me actually talk about it a little bit. This is, we were from developers that there's a gap in the community from a housing perspective. And I would call, I would term the people that are going to be targeted for this sort of the empty nesters, not necessarily the oldest retirees. So those people are sizing down. And they're sizing down, but they don't want to go into shock. They don't really, the original scheme was really, if you think about it, and, you know, I have a mother who went into assisted living, and I know, you know, old age homes are alike, you know, just sort of gave me more of that impression. And I was thinking, if I were one of those peoples, people, couples who were looking for a place to live, I wouldn't want to go there. I would think I have time to get to that place and hopefully a lot of time. But what's being provided here is a, I would say, this is a little bit more of a condominium-townhouse environment because there are separate buildings and because you have room to move and feel like you still have a home. So the concept doesn't bother me in the least. In fact, I think it's very smart. And I think from a, you know, when you're in areas where this is possible, which is not the case in other parts of New York City, all the better to be able to do it and accommodate the residents of the area. So I think it works. And I, you know, in terms of obstructing, you know, tweaking it here and there, I would just caution us on taking away little things that are important to people who are living in their next home, you know, whether it's an overhead or, you know, there may be a way to tweak something so you don't have to take away something that's a helpful feature to have in a place where you live. That's why I raised the whole question about parking. These are, you know, two-part families. I do, I was a little worried about, again, the obstruction of the landmark building, but I feel like that when we moved through the street views, I felt much more comfortable. That's quite a view right there. And, you know, there is, even as it starts to get out of spirit, there's a sense of it. And it's almost like, I don't know, this is a, it's almost like when you're looking, you know, I remember when I was younger and I would go to places like Newport. And you just, you could see the building at a distance, and you still get to admire it and appreciate it without having to see every single thing about it. I think one of the most important things, in addition to the fact that this building is going to be preserved, is that, and it's been mentioned here, is that the building will be programmed appropriately so that it is used and appreciated by the people who are going to be living in this community. And how we can help make sure that happens, I'm not 100% sure, but I would encourage that as something that is maybe discussed with, more with the community, even though the community itself will not be living there, but may eventually. So I think probably your suggestions about the wall made a lot of sense. And I like the idea of adding more of a natural landscape in there instead of having it feel like just a regular, almost a golf club retirement community. So I think it would be helpful to pay attention to the landscaping. But I think that, you know, with everyone's suggestions, I could support this project.
I can sort of support it. I mean, there are issues that, with regard to the house, which would be the premier artifact here. I agree with Michael's comments about the roofing. I think partially the problem with the paint is that if it was only partially inhabited for a decade, moisture in the house, you know, the way that paint is feeling suggests to me very strongly it's moisture that's coming from inside the house because it's feeling all the way back to the wood. I am not a planner. Somehow, it seems to me that if building type D and C that are in the back of the lot were reconfigured somehow, then you could pull away or eliminate that building number one, which is the building that obscures the house from the visage that you have now. And you could also pull that parking away from the main house. But that's a suggestion from the outside. I'm certainly not a landscape planner. But in general, I do appreciate much more of this scheme. I just think it, I would like to see some more work done on it and some other possibilities. But again, ultimately, to me, the premier issue is making sure that that house is done perfectly.
Yeah, I agree with a good deal of the comments that have happened already. And specifically, Michael's original ones about the, perhaps looking at ways to reduce the impact of the buildings around. And also, the landscape, I think, is very critical in this case. And I think that there's a need to have a more naturalistic and also a creative landscaping. And if you took that building one out and you changed the landscaping, you'd have a great view of the house. Because people talk about, well, there's a great view, there's a great view because there are proportions and some trees that aren't probably that important. Or, so that if you, because you're gonna have a main, you're gonna have an entry there. And I think it's very, very possible with just some landscaping changes, which would happen to begin with, with the construction would go on, to be able to have a nice view from that corner. So I think that's rather important. And I don't want to reduce the ability to sell the units, obviously, and have sufficient units. You do have two larger buildings that are sort of more apartment-type buildings that could be added to readily. Instead of dormers, maybe have a different structure or something, another floor even, I don't know. So I see some potential to make up for losing that one building. And I do think that's the most, building has the most impact on what potentially really nice view of the structure is. I also thought about moving the parking lot, in part just to make it easier to deal with some of the issues of what they're going to do here. At the same time, if you're gonna make that a very active-use facility, you need to have parking close to it. So I don't want to push that issue too much with the thought that, that maybe you can make it, you know, in a nicer location, but if you're gonna have that A, sometimes it's used for that and stuff, you might have people pay to park there, I think, or close to it. So I guess that's my general take on the issue. My main concern is, as architects in my literature just expressed, is the views of the house and which they've done a lot to work with. But I do think that landscaping can help that lot and remove that building. And I do think that this type of housing is probably more appropriate. And Chalk could speak better for that, but for the current time in Staten Island, where things are going. In a way, we change our opinions about the kind of housing that's worked best. And I think this setting is more also appropriate for the house than this sort of large end of housing back for me.
I agree with a lot of comments that are already made. And I had somewhere thinking that Michael didn't share that the little triangle at the far end of the site seems underutilized and could, I think that could support a taller, more densely packed building, you know, to eliminate, which means you can cut the building in half. But I think that that, I think it's forty-five feet from those four, the four look for buildings. I think that needs to increase a little buffer. And I think that there is dimension between the houses and the roadway to put those for roadway and the house. And I agree with landscaping, so we are very crucial. And we just need to keep working on that parking lot location next to the mansion because it is very prominent. And I agree that the restoration of the house needs to be first rate. I would agree that we should acquire the natural material for the roof and further investigation to see what that has.
I thought I'd offer that I would comment at the end. I think, first of all, that we're extremely far along in discussing all major projects that we see. And this is a major project. You know, there's a lot of comments and a lot of input. But sometimes, you know, that means that the project really needs to go back to the drawing board. And I just want to make it clear that I think from what I've heard today, there is substantial support for this project, and we're very, very far along here. I did have a couple of comments. One is that the parking currently is actually, you know, a worse place than the parking is now. So that's gonna be a boost. And I think we actually, in the first time around, I know we can do whatever we want here, but they actually proved the, in connection with the first 74-711, the asphalt tile that's on the roof.
That's correct.
So I realize we can change course on that. And I'm not sure that this group would have said that was a first-class restoration. So that movie may change when the time comes for roofing to go. And I guess I'm gonna go back to Mark, because I like harassing him at the end of the day. The, you know, the specific obligation, you know, I think if you would help if you could sort of spell that out of the 74-711, because here it's more, it's of some concerns. You heard my questions about, well, who is undertaking to do this? And as I said, you know, the current owner, I, you know, it's great. But when I look at a homeowners association, I get a little nervous about whether they're gonna be able to afford to do this. So how is the, how do we make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do at InfiniL?
I mean, the standard approach to this has been historically the position cyclical maintenance plan that requires, you know, periodic reports that says, the condition of the house, these are the things that need to be done. In our opinion, submitted to the staff at the commission, they look at it, and then they agree or disagree. And the obligation, as required by the declaration that's in everyone's TV and stuff, is that they have to implement the plan that's approved by the landmarks. And that's, that sort of back and forth, that periodic back and forth with work is what is, you know, is the enforcement mechanism that allows us to sort of, if we wanted to go and sue in court, sue in court. But that's the method.
go and sue, and court, sue and court, but that's the mechanism.
We've heard mention this notion, which is not unfamiliar to us, of some sort of escrow fund or something like that, set aside. I know we've looked at some buildings in Manhattan where we've asked, you know, where the developer is putting up a tower to a church, that either the church or the developer holds a certain amount of money. That is, that's fairly typical.
That's typical for 7479 for this tram. We generally have not, I don't think we've required them for any 7471, certainly. Yeah, so we've never required that for 7471. But I think it's smart, and I think that their indication that this is something that is going to be part of the duties required, so they do have a fund, I think is, you know, smart and easy.
Thank you.
I have another question here for Mark. We were talking about, you know, pulling buildings back to get them off of the landmark site. I'm not sure that's actually a good thing, because don't we have more jurisdiction if part of the building is on the landmark site? I mean, we have some because it's in proximity to the.
The whole site is subject to 7471, so we have jurisdiction over the whole site. And this relationship between the landmark and the waiver.
Okay, so the whole 7471 covers the entire site, and it's the landmark site itself. Okay, thank you.
And are we gravitating toward eliminating that building?
So, I think what I'm hearing is, as John said, there's substantial support for development at the site, proving again, development at this site. And I think that there is a sense that breaking them into clusters that have more space around them and green space and corridors and reducing the height is, can build a good relationship with the landmark that may be different than a pretty secure, but may be equally good. But I think that there are some thoughts about the distances between the buildings and the main building, and that can be accommodated both in reducing the front yard or the roadside yards of the houses, as well as integrating more landscaping features and as that's studied by the applicant, that may or may not result in reducing the size of the building or eliminating the building altogether. But I think it's sort of open at this point for you all to look at that site and think about the comments that we've heard, both the kind of first-class standard for landscaping as well as the relationship between the houses, and think about what you'd like to come back with, and we'll see that as we can get your treatment to help you.
Can I just respond a couple of minutes?
Richard and Tori, can you continue the talk here with the other side? Thank you, Commissioners, see you next week.